Okay, I'm going to call the order to the September 23rd, 2020 Committee, the whole meeting of the Board of Education. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Mrs. Boone, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to workshop setting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchison, should you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Okay, before we get started, I want to kind of set the stage for tonight. So this is for the members of the community that are in person or watching live. This is a different kind of Board of Education meeting than our communities likely witnessed in the past. Five times a year, we conduct a committee of the whole meeting that allows the district administration to present on topics that are central to the instructional programs and overall operation of the school district. This is one of those meetings. So our agenda and format is different than the last several meetings. As we move through the presentation tonight, I ask that board members hold off on asking questions until we completed, the administration's completed, so that we can absorb all the information and the full continuity of the plan. I ask the community intending in person tonight to please respect the process and be respectful of our team members making presentations. This will help the board have an informed and thoughtful discussion. As in all of our committee hall meetings, there's an opportunity for public comment at the end of tonight's agenda. Thank you in advance for your understanding and appreciation of this important topic being discussed tonight. To that point, as you will hear from Dr. Schuler and the senior leadership team, this has been a plan that has been in the works and undergoing refinement since mid-August. We now have the benefit of learning from our own experience with 15 school sites open for in-person learning and three weeks of remote learning under our belts. That experience has been valuable and has helped inform the plans that have been refined to bring students, teachers, and staff back to our middle schools and high schools. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, excuse me, to Dr. Schuler.
All right, thank you, Mr. Paulson. I'm going to go ahead and let the presentation slides come up and get started. I think you did a good job of setting the foundation for tonight. So at our board meeting two weeks ago, we did provide for the Board of Education and community an update on our reopening at our elementary schools. It was important as a foundation to see the success of that program. We did present some information on a DuPage County Return to Learn framework and identified really the main areas of planning that we were going to focus on this evening. And so we're going to, we're going to jump in. Jahan, do we have? Perfect. Perfect. Thank you, Jahan. All right, so we're here tonight to provide an update to the Board of Education, as we indicated we would, on our reopening plans. And I just want to start with a reminder of five foundational beliefs that really sat on top of all of our reopening plan efforts. These were first presented to the board back in July. But as we've updated plans that we're bringing to the board tonight, just important to state that these foundational beliefs and guiding principles did not go away. Any of our reopening plans are focused on protecting the health and safety of all students and staff to the greatest extent possible. Two, we want to make sure that we safely bring students and staff back to school, but ensure that we have practices that allow us to keep students in school once they're there. Three, we want to focus on ensuring rigor and promote student academic and social emotional growth. Want to make sure that we can address and continue to address any skill deficiencies or anything that may have emerged as a result of the disruption to the educational process back in the spring. Four, we do want to focus on reestablishing relationships and ensuring the social emotional needs. Basic wellness of our families are addressed. And then five, we need to make sure that we do create a reopening plan that's fully compliant with all state and local directives while incorporating agility as we adjust. And so what you're going to see tonight in the recommendations for a reopening plan, I believe, is a continued focus on those five areas. I want to focus with the board on three areas that were a part of the August 12th guidance from the Illinois Department of Public Health. And there have been a couple of key updates that are critical to understand that are important in setting a foundation for the reopening tonight. Number one, on September the 10th, the Illinois Department of Public Health did revise their decision tree for symptomatic individuals. They adjusted the language in a way that allows for us to more easily address what would be chronic symptoms as a result of an allergy or another symptom non, not necessarily addressed specifically to COVID. Number two, working with the county health department primarily through responding to symptomatic individuals. In cases of COVID-19, we've been able to get some clarification from the health department on not just the cleaning of rooms. It's still essential that a room be cleaned, obviously if there is a symptomatic case within the room. But the amount of time that the room has to sit vacant before that process can begin has been adjusted by the health department, which mitigates that 24-hour time we were concerned about. And they have continued to provide some guidance for us around close contact and contact tracing. And I think one important clarification, they didn't change the language in the IDPH guidance on the definition of a close contact, but have provided some clarification to school districts that the intent was not to eliminate the ability to have a passing period within a school. But we will obviously still have to continue to focus on contact of individuals during that passing period. And so again, I just wanted to update the board on those three things as again, they're going to set a foundation for that recommendation you're going to see tonight. One very quick update on our elementary data that we presented last time as of board meeting tonight. We have had six positive cases of COVID-19 in our elementary schools. We have had 14 students that have been required to quarantine as a result of being a close contact of a COVID-19 case or having traveled internationally. But I think important thing to know, especially for the board, is that we have not had a student that's had to quarantine as a result of a close contact inside of a school building. We have had some students that have had to quarantine as a result of a close contact, but that was through an activity outside of the school, a baseball team that led to it. So again, important to know that while we've had cases and while we've certainly had students that have had to quarantine, the protocols in place to ensure physical distancing and avoid close contacts within the school building have worked for us in avoiding that. On the staff side, we've had two positive cases, staff cases of COVID-19 and three individuals that have had to quarantine as a result. In one of those cases, we did have a couple of additional staff members that had to quarantine based on a close contact inside of the school building on the staff side. And again, just for purpose of context, we have 3,670 students that are attending our elementary buildings every day, our 13 elementary buildings and the early childhood center. So where that takes us then in terms of key considerations that bring us to the recommendation that comes to you tonight, see, the IDPH guidance was updated since that August 12 guidance that reverted course. We've had success in our elementary setting in terms of being able to follow our health protocols and avoid thus far outbreaks within our schools. We've not had a school that's had to shut down as a result of a positive case or a cluster of students. Clearly, our original foundational beliefs were built on reopening plans with a desired offer in person and remote learning options with appropriate social distancing, face coverings, and enhanced sanitation measures. And then finally, I want to mention to the board, because I know the board is well aware, we monitor daily the COVID data within both our region and our specific ZIP code-coded areas. And I confidently will say to the board that where we are as of this morning is a very similar place that we were at the point in time when we were still planning the opening of the hybrid plan. And so we are going to recommend some specific dates upon return tonight. And I'm going to first turn it over to Melissa to walk through the middle school recommendations.
All right, good evening. So here you're going to see the timeline for a return of in-person learning for middle school, starting with a grade level phase in of sixth grade. And that would be October 13th through the 16th. And then we would be moving on to returning our seventh and eighth grade students at the same time, starting on October 19th. So at that point, all middle school students would return to the full-day hybrid model. Administratively, we all felt that it made sense to start with sixth grade first. It allows them an opportunity to become familiar with their new building and also the new routines, procedures, and protocols. On this slide, you're going to see the hybrid model that we did present in the summer months. This will be the model that we continue to implement at the middle school level. As a reminder, our middle school students are in two cohorts. One cohort attends school on Monday and Thursday for in-person learning. And then the other cohort attends in-person learning on Tuesdays and Fridays. Wednesday is that common day where both cohorts have the opportunity to see one another and work with their teachers in a synchronous learning manner. When our sixth graders return to in-person learning, we will be moving back to our regular bell schedule that is outlined right here. And that will be a return to the bell sched, the regular bell schedule for all middle school students. And the reason we need to do this is because even though it would just be sixth graders in the building at that time, our seventh and eighth grade students being remote, but we have multiple teachers that work with multiple grade levels. Additionally, we have multiple teachers that are working with students in the virtual academy and students in person. So this is why every middle school student will be moving to this schedule once sixth graders return on the 13th. And while we're speaking of the virtual academy, this slide really outlines a recap for board and community regarding the virtual academy and some updates. So first, you'll see a recap of the courses that are offered in the virtual academy and are taught by all District 200 middle school teachers. Underneath it, you'll see there are some courses that are taught by in-person teachers. We do have a math teacher that is dedicated to teaching the geometry course. She teaches in-person all day, but she has one class of geometry, virtual academy-only students. And then our band and orchestra teachers at the middle school level, they are working each, several periods during the day with both in-person students and virtual academy students. Therefore, starting October 13th, when sixth graders return, we're going to be doing some live streaming of those classes so that the students in the virtual academy still have access to band and orchestra. An exciting update for the board is we've been adding to our programming at the virtual academy. Starting this week, we have added Spanish and French for interested eighth grade students in the virtual academy. They are taking this through edgenuity. But then they are also receiving support from middle school French and Spanish teachers synchronously as well. So we're excited about that. And then I want to emphasize too, so with semester two coming, we are planning to continue the programming in virtual academy as we have designed. But it's also important to note that families that are requesting a change to in-person learning can submit that request. I do want to emphasize the building of both the in-person experience and the virtual academy experience is almost like a complex jigsaw puzzle. We're thinking about the numbers in person between two cohorts. And then we're thinking about the numbers on the virtual academy side. And it took a lot of collaboration around the administrative team to really think about scheduling for both of those programs to be able to offer a really high-quality experience for both. So it's certainly been a complex jigsaw puzzle we've put together there. So moving into high school. You'll remember last month when I presented, I outlined some work tasks in front of us to bring students back into our high school buildings. And one of those work tasks I talked to you about is a solution for our virtual academy students. And this is really important because when we made the decision to start remotely on August 14th, we folded those students that had registered for virtual academy back into their regular courses. And so at this time in our class periods, we have students that had registered for the hybrid model. And we have students that registered for the virtual academy sitting in the same classes. And so working through that hurdle, we certainly talked about the importance of continuity for our students there. And so this image you're seeing really represents the solution that we have come up with for that situation in that our teachers can be working simultaneously with their students that are in person and their remote students by utilizing Google Meets or Zoom as we currently are doing. Now, I do want to emphasize this is certainly a heavy lift on the operation side of things. This is a big change instructionally for our teaching staff. And it really does play into the timeline for, that we're going to outline here next.
Dr. Kyle.
Thank you, Melissa. Yeah, I've had the opportunity to work with administration at the high school and teachers all the way back into May, up until our point where we decided to go to e-learning. And now we are working on a plan to bring students back in person. So we're looking at October 5th to the 13th to give teachers an opportunity for live streaming pilot and preparation at both high schools. October 14th, we still have the PSAT and SAT that we need to give to our 11th and 12th graders. So those students will have the opportunity to come back to their school for the first time since March. During that time, ninth and 10th graders will have asynchronous learning. October 15th and 16th, administration and unit representation felt it would be a good idea to bring ninth graders in first because they haven't had that opportunity to be at the high schools. So they have that opportunity to be in there at least a day to get their way around, know where they need to go for those that are choosing the in-person model. October 19th, that's when all in-person high school students would return for a full-day hybrid model. That may seem like a far date for a lot of people, but what I will say, and Melissa stated it pretty well, is we have some technology purchases that we want to make sure come in. We want to make sure they're installed correctly, cameras, desktops. We also want to make sure we give the teachers the proper training that they need to make sure this is successful. And from my side, I also oversee HR. When we bring teachers back, we do have When we bring teachers back, we do have, I think, five at one building and six at another that have medical releases. So we will be staffing some permanent subs to make sure that they're there while the teacher teaches remotely due to health concerns. So the next slide is the high school in-person hybrid schedule. And some of the things that changed, Melissa Murphy shared that when we changed in August 14th to put virtual academy back into the actual classrooms, that has made us look at the streaming option. So if you look at Cohort A, Monday, that person—that student would be in person, that's a full day. Tuesday would be remote, Wednesday asynchronous, Thursday in person, and Friday remote. Cohort B would be the reverse. All students in a remote learning setting will simultaneously be learning with in-person students using Google meets and Zoom. This includes students that choose not to return to in-person learning. One of the changes that we made since the last time we showed this with the board was Wednesday was synchronous. Having students come back for a full day in person and students that are out, remote learning, that does increase the synchronous instruction. So we did work with the union on switching Wednesday to asynchronous to cut down on some of the screen time. So we have, right now, we do have what parents picked back in July of in-person and virtual academy, but what we feel is that we can't get the cohort match yet until we resurvey our parent population. The next slide is the actual schedule, the high school schedule. So that's the schedule we've been using up until we had the lockdown last March. So those periods would be the same. There'd be lunch, there'd be access periods, period one through eight. We're going back to the regular schedule. The amount of heavy lifting it takes to get students back in person, the opportunity to feed them lunch, since we found out how to do that and make it work, is worth bringing the students back all day. And then the next slide, high school virtual academy instructional updates. Originally, we were going to use edgenuity with teachers that had medical releases. Once we made the switch to e-learning, we brought those students back in with all the rest of the students. So they're currently taking the same courses that everybody else is, they are no longer in edgenuity. Starting an edgenuity course midsemester would be really difficult, so that's why we've talked about this live streaming. Virtual academy will continue to attend their classes through remote learning, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday will be asynchronous for virtual academy students and in-person students. Office hours for high school teachers will be available on Wednesday, allowing all students to receive additional support. And last, for planning purposes, one of the biggest pieces that we are focusing on right now with our administrative teams is making sure that we give a choice back to our high school parents, whether it's in-person or if it's virtual. Since there were some changes, we only feel it's fair for parents to make that decision again. So if the board does approve this plan, we do plan to have a survey out tomorrow morning, asking parents to get us back their answer for all of their students, their children, by September 24th. Or September 24th, it'll open, and then we're going to ask them to complete it by September 28th. We do need a quick turnaround on that because it's going to take a lot of time for our assistant principals to balance those schedules and break Cohort A with Cohort B. So again, when I started the presentation, October 19th may seem like a far timeline, but there's a lot of pieces that I will be monitoring along with the high school administration, and we'll continue to work with the WWEA representation on live streaming committee. Currently, right now, we are meeting every day at 12:30 with technology experts to try and make that transition as smooth as possible, with adding two opportunities for teachers on September 25th, and also October 9th for professional development to make this change. From there, I'll pass it back to Melissa.
So here you'll see an update with regards to special education services. For those students who do receive services through a 504 resource-level support or in our direct courses, they will follow the full-day hybrid model. And for each of our students receiving those services, they do actually have an IEP and an IELP. So the IEP is for their services when they're in person, and the IELP is for their services when they're in a remote learning environment. With regards to our instructional services, you will recall last month, we presented about our students that are already back in-person learning. And so for those students, our reopening committee is currently working on a plan for a smooth transition from that shortened day that they have right now into a full-day services by the end of the first quarter.
The next few slides, we're going to go through quickly with the board because this is really not new information. This is information that was part of the original reopening plans when we originally presented the hybrid model, our health and safety protocols. So students, middle and high school, will continue to self-certify each morning. So parents will sign the release that they will conduct that symptom screening any day that a student is coming to school. And obviously, if the student does have any of the symptoms off that symptom list and/or a fever, student will be asked to stay home, self-isolate, and quarantine, or go see a medical professional if it's an alternative diagnosis. How we'll respond to symptomatic students in school also will stay the same. Each of our middle and high schools does have both the COVID-19 symptom assessment room as well as their health office. And again, any staff member and/or student exhibiting a new symptom not attributed to an allergy or pre-existing condition would be sent home from that symptomatic room. Our health protocols, again, I mentioned earlier, the IDPH decision tree, which was updated. That's what we follow when we have either a positive case, a symptomatic student or student that is going home with another symptom that's determined not to be related to COVID-19. The information on the decision tree did not change, but again, there were some definitions on the symptoms that—with certain pieces attributed to a new symptom that gives us a little bit more latitude in working in those situations. Our response to positive cases and contact tracing, again, I mentioned on one of the early slides that we've had some experience now in contact tracing, have developed some good protocols with DuPage County Health Department that allows us to take a significant lead in any situations of contact tracing, but work with them. Again, the definition of a close contact remains within six feet for 15 minutes or longer. And again, we will continue to use the notification letters that we've used at our elementary building in any situation where we have a positive case of COVID-19, we send a letter to the entire school, making them aware of that, as well as a letter to the individual classroom. In this case, it would be classrooms where the student is, as well as making direct contact to any student and/or staff member who would be deemed close contact. Sitting on top of all of our safety, health, and safety protocols, we will continue to maintain six-feet physical distancing in our classrooms. And I can't continue to say enough to the board. That is the reason why we have not had additional students that have had to quarantine in the result of positive cases, because that's out of the question. If students are spaced six feet apart when they are in the classroom, it eliminates concern around close contact inside of a classroom. We obviously will still, at middle and high school level, have to do that contact tracing when they are outside of the classroom. But again, that physical distancing and reminders about physical distancing even outside of the classroom will continue to be critically important. At the secondary level, we do have marked hallways that will direct traffic, certainly within the hallways, to keep directional traffic flowing. We have all of our PPE, both for staff and students, that's in, has been delivered to our schools. And again, we will continue to monitor any of the common spaces for the purpose of both avoiding overcrowding and maintaining physical distancing. Cleaning and disinfecting. All of our classrooms have been equipped with hand sanitizers, wipes, disinfecting bottles, and paper towels that are EPA-approved and effective for cleaning against COVID-19. Those hand sanitizing dispensers are installed in every classroom and in common spaces in all of our buildings. We've purchased backpack ionizers and sprayers to help with being able to quickly clean rooms and spaces if we need to. And at the elementary level, we've made some adjustments to custodian day-night schedules to ensure that we have more custodial support on hand during the day when students and staff will be in the buildings. Again, custodians will help us in terms of supporting cleaning lunchrooms, washrooms, and in those areas. The cleaning protocol that we developed in our classroom is that at the end of a period, we will clean desks at the end of a period. So there's a spray bottle and supplies to make sure that desks are cleaned on the way out of a classroom. Mechanical systems, again, we shared this information over the summer. All of our mechanical systems have been checked. The filters have been upgraded to at least more of 11 filters. We've started our systems earlier to ensure that we get more fresh air into our classrooms, and certainly dampers have been set to introduce maximum outside air to continue to circulate fresh air. Certainly in rooms that have windows, we encourage staff members, as we do at our elementary buildings, to open those windows when possible, again, to encourage the flow of fresh air right into the buildings. And then finally, I want to mention to the board, so IDPH really introduced this concept of an adaptive pause. So I started the presentation by saying, I think we're in a place where we can make this transition, and we feel good about making this transition. We understand that there continues to be work to do to make sure that we support our staff as they prepare for this transition. I think the board heard from some staff members via the email that have shared concerns around professional learning and wanting to make sure that they're ready. We certainly want to support that, but want to be really clear as to what are the things that could, in fact, still put us back into what I would call an adaptive pause. We do monitor, I mentioned, weekly the metrics put out by the DuPage County Health Department in their return-to-school metric. The current level in their return-to-school framework is moderate. If that shifts up significantly into the highest risk category, that would very likely push us back toward remote learning. We also want to make sure that we monitor some operational metrics, again, in any of the protocols you see. It is critically important that we make sure we can implement those mitigation strategies that are identified, the consistent use of masks, physical distancing, cleaning, disinfecting, symptom screening, hand hygiene, and respiratory etiquette, and then the ability to carry out contact tracing. If at any point we cannot execute any of those key mitigation strategies, we have to have a serious conversation about the continued in-person learning. And then we want to make sure, obviously, that we have the ability to staff all classrooms. Dr. Kyle mentioned some positions that, obviously, we do need to fill now, but we do need to make sure as we navigate toward the reopening of middle and high schools that we are fully ready and that we are ready to execute all of the new technologies and tools. So again, we will continue to keep an eye on this. I mentioned to the board, in addition to monitoring the community transmission metrics on a weekly basis through the DuPage framework, there's a site through Northwestern that allows you to zero in very specifically on ZIP code-coded data, especially around cases per hundred thousand and positivity rates. And again, as you zero in specifically to the ZIP codes that serve District 200, we are in a better spot now than we were at the last point where we were fully into the hybrid model. And so I'm confident in where we are, but we need to maintain that moving forward. So in summary, in summary, for the board, we would recommend that we move to middle school in-person transition beginning on 10/13 with that sixth-grade hybrid schedule, and then seventh and eighth grade students would join them in a full middle school hybrid model on October the 19th at the high school level. We would recommend that we begin that in-person transition on the 14th with that testing day that actually is going to have about 550 students in the building on that day anyway that have already signed up. And then the ninth-grade hybrid on the 15th and 16th with a transition to the full hybrid on October the 19th for all grade levels. Our high school virtual academy students would continue to attend their classes, the classes that they're currently in, through live stream Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, with that Wednesday asynchronous day. And we are happy with that to answer any questions or hear any feedback from the board.
So before we get started and go around the table, so to speak, I want to kind of open it up with two comments and a conversation that I had today. So if I look back on August 12th, which was right before we had to pivot, we saw our last presentation, we all were on board as a board individually with the hybrid model for middle school and high schools. And I don't believe that any of us have changed our general concept about supporting that model. I don't think that there's too much that's structurally changed within this. Certainly, there's some enhancements based on what we've learned from the elementary practices and the remote learning experience. So that's kind of where I think the board last left this conversation. Today, I had the opportunity to talk to the deputy governor, Jesse Ruiz, kind of shared with him the—some of the practices we put in place at the elementary schools, and how we have 14—or 13 elementary schools, our early childhood building open, shared with him some kind of our approaches that we were going to learn about tonight. And he commended us. He said, "You guys are doing—taking the right practices, following the procedures that Illinois State Board of Education is mandating." You know, when I hear that, and then I hear that other school superintendents are coming to visit our buildings to see how we're doing it, I mean, I think it's a tremendous, you know, thing to feel from—at least from my standpoint as a board president, and I think what the community should know, is that there's people looking to us about how we're doing this. So I love the fact that we've got a plan in place that we can discuss tonight, and I feel very positive about the work that Dr. Schuler's done and the entire team over here. I know it's been a heavy lift. I described it a little bit earlier today. It's like playing tug-of-war with four different ropes. When you read all these emails that we get from the community and things that we hear outside the boardroom, but I just want to thank you and commend you for the huge effort that you've undertaken really since—even before the summer started.
And I actually want to mention, similar in that vein, so one of the other things that we have done over the last couple of weeks as well is connect with, learn from any high school that is offering in-person. The Geneva High School's been identified several times. Cayman High School, that's also out in King County, have spoken with them. St. Francis, here locally, private school, but obviously is offering in-person through a hybrid, and so we have learned from their experiences, as well as some of the high schools that are planning a transition. I spoke to a superintendent at Lincoln Way, who's—they just started a hybrid transition back this week, and that's their plan for a while, to learn from that experience. And actually, I had an opportunity yesterday to join a national roundtable of school districts that were transitioning back into a hybrid model and learn from their experiences and how they're approaching. And I just—I'm trusting, at least in those that I talked to around the country, including other states, that there were definitely more high schools that were transitioning back to the hybrid model using this live streaming option to be able to continue to provide for really both audiences, acknowledging fully that that's a new model again for teachers to adjust to and that they're going to need support in, but that is definitely a model used often. Yorkville High School is also— Yorkville High School has also been open and offering in-person, and so we've tried to learn from anybody that we can, as we've simultaneously shared with others, about our experience at the elementary level.
All right. So board discussion. Who wants to start? How about Ms. Scriptary?
Sure. I want to start out with just a couple of comments first before I ask my questions. And Melissa, I wrote down your complex jigsaw puzzle because I do think that's even an understatement. It's, you know, having been a teacher and knowing how schools operate, trying to figure out the logistics of all of this, I commend this senior leadership team and all the people that are involved. And I want to first start out by thanking our elementary staff that have been back now for over three weeks, and the fact that we can learn from them, and it's the success that they are having is which is able to, we can propel from here. I also want to go back to those foundational beliefs because there's been, I think, some misinformation out within the community that we are listening to loud voices right now, and that's not the case. Our foundational beliefs have always been to get our students back into school for some in-person instruction. And so I don't feel that as a district, we are listening to a loud voice right now. I believe it's we've stuck to those foundational beliefs. You know, I can't take off my teaching experience and, that I've had. And I know our staff, I mean, they have had to make so many changes since March. They've had to flip over a weekend and go remote, and then it was, we were all going to come back, and then we're not, and now we're going to switch again. And that's a lot. That's a lot to expect. And I do want to show, I appreciate their flexibility, and I know we're going to be needing to ask for more flexibility because we don't know what's going to be happening in the next few months. So I want to thank them for that. And as we've listened to, or read, I should say, in the last probably 12 hours, we've heard from quite a few staff members. And I want to know, what can we do? Is it a situation where we need to allocate maybe some more funds, throw in an extra few days in the calendar? Because time seems to be a common theme that we're hearing, that they would like some more time to try to figure this out. And so does that mean we can need to take a few extra days where maybe we move to just some remote learning for everybody so that we can give, where it's synchronous, no, asynchronous, where they're doing some things so we can pull our staff together and give them some time? Do we, you know, can we free up our department chairs who have maybe only a couple of classes that they're responsible for and give them two weeks to try to work out what's plans for their buildings? Like, do we need to, as a board, say, you know, what can we do to help to give them more time? That's where I guess I'm kind of going with that. I'm curious on, now I'm going to move to questions. I'm curious on, now that we're doing this new survey, if that number shifts, let's say we were 83% before and 17% were going to be virtual, and let's just say we did 90/10, are we still confident we can keep that six-foot distance in the classrooms? Or are we going to need to start looking at breaking out some more sessions or sections and finding other space within buildings? So that's one question I have. I'm concerned about the ability for students now that when they're on their day of home or learning, because it's not their cohort day in-person, if they need help that day and our teachers are teaching, how are we going to provide that help? So it doesn't have to wait until the next, it doesn't have to wait until the next Wednesday. For the, those who are still choosing remote learning, are they part of a cohort, or are they going to get four days of synchronous instruction because they're able to go in? So that was another question that I had.
Can we take a few of those on? So six-foot physical distancing, we have to.
Yeah.
So again, that's the purpose of the survey. Can I say that that will not require some potential adjustment or shifting in some sections entirely possible, that it could also entirely possible, just depending on who flips? So I would suspect we may have some migration potentially both ways within the schedule, but that's the reason, I think Dr. Kyle mentioned, that we're going to have a short window on that response or refinement so that we still have ample time for our administrators or schedulers in each of the buildings to literally look section by section. Before the start of the school year, they had literally gone through every section within the building, looked at the two cohorts to ensure that we had no situations where we could not provide that six-foot distancing. So we've got to retool that work, but I'm confident that we will. Because it was in the presentation that our virtual academy students will have four days of remote experience. So on both the days that a particular cohort is in-person, as well as the alternate day, they would be in that synchronous experience, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Even for high school? Because I didn't think we were calling it virtual academy anymore. So it is still considered virtual academy?
It is still considered virtual academy.
Okay.
Yep. The other thing I will mention and should mention at the high school level, the other place that that will help with that model is it will help with issues of students that may need to be quarantined, students that may. So again, make no mistake, we mentioned the six students at the elementary level that have been positive COVID-19 cases. We've also had three high school cases of COVID-19, even though students are not in our buildings. I think one of them was through one of the activities or teams that was a part of. So there will be cases at the middle and high school as well, and so the ability to utilize the live stream of the technology provides an avenue if a student has to be out for a shorter or longer-term period of time as well, that they can still access that instructional experience. So I think it'll help with that, but that was the answer. What was the last question?
I didn't understand, I did not understand the point Chris was making about there's still virtual academy. Can you just go through that again for me?
Well, so I thought we dissolved.
They would still be identified as a virtual academy student, meaning we're not expecting to see them in the building two days a week.
Okay, thanks.
I'm trying to remember what was the last one. I did have one more that I didn't ask, and I'll try to come back.
Can I piggyback on her question?
Yes.
So we stay there for a second. I'm probably more of a visual learner. I almost need you to draw me a picture of all this. I'm trying to understand logistically what it looks like to pick up and change the model right now. So we put the virtual academy kids in with those who were hoping to return to in-person at some point. So does that mean for each teacher, there's a section of kids who are, some always planning to remain virtual, some hoping to come back into the building? And now, when we come back into the building, can they accommodate all of the students in each section that are in-person, or were we looser when we put those sections together since they were all going to be home anyway? And I guess my bigger question is, do all the teachers still have all the same students in the same classes when we pivot to this? So the only difference is, instead of all of them are at home doing their learning, some of them are now at home and some of them are now in the classroom?
Yes. Yes. The last piece that you just detailed. So ideally, there will be no adjustments in schedules.
Okay.
As we affirm everybody's choice. So whoever you have for third-period math class, the students and the teachers remain the same, right, for that section? And to your point, if there are 25 students, on Monday, there may be 10 students that are part of Cohort A or they're in-person on Monday, while the remainder of the students could be the other 15 are participating remotely via the live stream. Tuesday, there may be 10 other students that are part of Cohort B, right, that are there in-person while the other students live stream, but it's the same group of 25 students dispersed through the week, either in-person or remotely.
So in theory, the only difference is, a teacher is teaching a class to 25 students, and it used to be teacher in an empty classroom, kids all in their homes, and now it's teacher in the classroom with some collection of kids each day and a bunch at home.
Yep.
And so it should be business as usual. I guess a follow-up question to that, though, is...
I don't want to oversimplify that by calling that business as usual, because that's not business as usual, but yes, that is the model.
So I'm wondering if then a realistic concern of teachers could be that it's hard to cater to kids in front of you at the same time as you're trying to work with kids who are not in front of you.
Yes.
And do you have any way to help them with that?
Yeah. That will absolutely be a concern from teachers, and so I think that's kind of what Chris was getting at through, I mean, support them in the same way that we support teachers anytime they've made a transition in instructional models. So we have got leaders, we've got expertise among our staff. We've already begun to tap into that as we've rolled out some of the pilots, and so I think it's a combination of using expertise on our teaching staff to help make that transition and model, but also, I think, Jenna, just a recognition that it's not going to be perfect on day one.
Oh, sure.
Right? Every day, we're going to be better than we were the day before as we introduce a new model. We were certainly not perfect, right, in the initial transition to remote learning. We're still not, nowhere near, right, as that's evolved. This is going to be another new model that's going to take some refinement and some evolution, but especially at the high school level, it does allow you to, A, serve both audiences, right, the students who do elect to attend to the in-person option and those that stay fully remote, yet make the current course offerings and classes accessible to all of our students. And in the original model of the virtual academy through a genuity, not every class that was offered inside of our school building was going to be available, so that is a benefit of this pivot in that students are able to stay in the classes that they've selected.
Okay.
I'll go back to Chris and let her finish some questions.
So now, I was misunderstanding the high school model. I was thinking it was similar to the middle school doing asynchronous. So now, our students, you might be home dialing into the classroom, but you're four days a week.
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's was different in my mind.
Correct.
And then my last thing that I hadn't asked about before, I know Charlie mentioned we have a few situations of medical leaves where we're going to need someone to cover a class. The teacher will call in. And I know we, back in August, approved adding some additional permanent subs in all of our buildings to be able to cover. Are we looking at increasing to even more permanent subs in our building so we have that coverage should somebody need to, a teacher need to quarantine or something like that?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Then I think you answered everything.
Dave, if you want to, I'll go next.
Sure. So, you know, I want to echo most of Chris's, I didn't disagree with anything Chris said on her opening comments in terms of the overarching principle being what's been guiding us and not the, you know, not the voices we're hearing from the community that we've always wanted to be back in school, and I think, you know, that's why we're where we are. I think, you know, there's been, you know, comments that I've heard and read about the, this change in the middle of the semester being disruptive, and we asked families to commit for a semester, and now we're not committing for a semester and things of that nature. And, you know, while I understand that viewpoint, I also think, you know, this is unprecedented times, so to expect that we would commit to that. And secondly, that commitment that we asked, we are now giving the flexibility for those people to now again make the choice. So I don't, I think, I think we're, you know, I think we're living by the same rules that we're asking the community and the students to abide by, so I think that's good. On this whole, this topic we just had about the remote and they're all in one class, a couple of questions about that, and you might not, the second semester, would it be the same plan, or would we be looking at the second semester going back to, because virtual was going to be carved out separate, right? So would we be doing the same, the plan we're going to do now, is that going to continue in the second semester, or might we carve virtual out again?
Yeah. So one, I don't want to project forward as to exactly where we'll be. Second semester, we need to plan for that. I mean, certainly, my hope is that we can get back to having all students in our buildings as quickly as we can, but I think, to be honest, the answer to part of that is, we're going to have to evaluate and see how this goes. On some level, you're going to actually have two different models for that hybrid schedule, what you're going to have in play at the middle school and what you're going to have in play at the high school. So I think we're going to have a good opportunity to also see within a hybrid schedule what works and what does not work. And again, I think, you know, to the answer that I gave earlier, like, we're going to learn from this. We're going to learn on a daily, on a weekly basis. We're going to continue, I'm confident, to get feedback at the building level, and we're going to continue to provide opportunities for teachers to train, to learn, to, you know, to continue to grow in that. So I don't know. I don't, to try to speculate exactly where we'll be, I can tell you, just as we did with this, that as soon as we're started with this transition, we will be looking ahead to the opportunities that come after that, so we're not going to stop in that planning ahead, but we need to see how it goes.
Yeah, and that's fair, and I get that. I guess that is the one thing that's, you know, different than it was in August. And then related to the teachers and those that signed up to do virtual, so the only ones that will be only virtual are the ones that are doing elementary today.
Yeah.
Right? And I remember, it was a big number, right?
No, middle, oh, sorry. Middle school, there still is a separate track for virtual academy at the middle school that will not change. And I guess, I think if I understand the question, high school teachers, there are high school teachers who will be teaching virtually if, in fact, they do have a medical certification or not able to be in the building, but they will not be teaching only virtual academy students.
So that means the kids in the classroom may have...
We would have to have another, we would have to have another individual in the classroom supporting students as well, even if there's a teacher that's delivering that instruction remotely.
And one of the other places I was going with that, I don't remember the exact number, but something like 115 or 120 requests that were made in the summer, and most of them, you know, there was only like five or six, a difference of five or six. Are the numbers still pretty similar? In other words, are there more teachers now that want it to be virtual that won't be because of this change?
No.
Okay, good. For lunch in middle and high school, how is that going to work? Are they going to be eating in the classrooms? Is it going to be lots of different spaces?
Yeah. So again, one of the guidelines that we didn't mention specifically on the piece, there's still a limit to 50 in a group gathering size, and so at both the middle and high schools, they're going to have to utilize multiple locations to feed students that will include both existing cafeterias and other spaces that have been designated by each of the schools. So the principals have already designated the number of lunch spots that they need. In most cases, at the middle schools, they're probably going to need three lunch spots to accommodate the students that may be there on a given hybrid day. And at the high schools, I believe they're designating five lunch locations that could each hold up to 50 students in it.
And the kids will be assigned, this is where to go?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we need to know who's in which of the locations.
Okay. Thank you. When does the first quarter end?
Dr. Kyle, do you know that off the...
Is it late October, early November?
I believe it's at the end of October.
End of October.
Okay. Thanks. I was just curious because of that whole, I saw some comments today about the sanitizer and having to wait for 10 minutes. Is that true? Having to wait, so you've got to spray it, and then you've got to wait 10 minutes before you wipe it down? And there was some concern that I read about people, about being able then to effectively sanitize between classes?
Mr. Farley, can you help with that? I think the question is, what's in the bottles that are in the classroom? So what's... So what's sprayed on a desk, or actually, Mr. Robinson is out there. When sprayed on a desk, does that have to wait 10 minutes or can it be wiped in between?
All disinfectants will work when it's sprayed and wiped off. We're not drying the surface. We're just wiping off the excess liquid. The liquid still stays on there and does its job and dries for the next kids to come in. So it'll work. It'll still be effective at 99%.
Thanks. Just going back to the lunch comment. And for elementary, are we going to stick with the nine to one that we're currently doing? Or is there the possibility of extending the elementary?
Yeah, we are for the time, Dave, for right now. Right now, we're focused on middle and high school. And I'm certain that question's going to come up at some point, but right now, we're focused middle and high school.
And then, just two more. What's a typical asynchronous, just maybe a class? Like what, the math class? Because today it's all, today what they're doing is what they'd be doing whether in the classroom or behind the computer with synchronous. With asynchronous, just pick a subject, math. What does a typical asynchronous math period look like?
Mrs. Murphy, want to answer that?
An asynchronous learning day can be a combination of a lot of different activities. It can be a teacher who has recorded themselves delivering instruction. And this is something that we know our students do appreciate because it gives them the opportunity to pause a video, rewind, slow down, listen again. It can be an assignment, a digital assignment. It can be a paper assignment. It can be reading a textbook. It can be listening to a podcast. So it can be a combination of a lot of different learning activities. It will be from all subject areas on those asynchronous days.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to get a kind of a picture in my mind. And then, I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask anyway. What will it take to get us to five days of in-person school?
Well, I would have to be relaxing of that physical distancing requirement. As long as that is a core requirement, that you have six-foot physical distancing within the class, going to be very difficult at the secondary level to be five days a week in person. Again, recognizing, sure, at the elementary level, the only reason we're able to do that is that literally we space students out where we have no more than 16, 17 students in a class. We have a much higher percentage of students that are in the virtual academy at the elementary level in the way that it turned out. So short answer to it is I think it's going to take relaxing of that physical distancing requirement that I think could come from a couple of places. Certainly could come from conversation around, obviously, you know, vaccine, the point at which perhaps we get to that. Could come, I've been a part of a few conversations around some potential universal testing options that could be employed, like some universities are using even within the state. If we could arrive at a place where testing, I think, became a more prominent part of that. This is my speculation, that I think you could open up that conversation. But something that would allow the state to relax that physical distancing requirement.
And really, in terms of the guidelines that are in place today, it's getting to that stage, phase five.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm going to start off with a technology question. For this, prior to Rod. My first assumption is our network traffic should look the same in this model as it does today. We shouldn't see no noticeable burst of traffic due to student shifting.
Oh, we'll see a slight increase just because the kids in the class and some of these scenarios will be joining in the meet as well. But yeah, network traffic is not an issue in this. It's more processing issues on the computers.
Okay. And it sounds like construction will be in Google Classroom only? Or will you be using other technologies like Zoom or others?
Both, yeah. Yeah, it's not only, I mean, we, I think, Rod, you probably know, Google Hangout is probably a more utilized option, but both will be available still as a tool.
And then lastly, we had some comments from the podium at the last meeting about an individual having some technology problems. I'm assuming we followed up with that person. Have we seen an increase or decrease in technology problems over, since we started this to where we are today?
I wouldn't say we've seen. If anything, we're seeing different types of problems. Again, a lot of the issues we get from parents or students at home are things that are happening nationwide to people who are doing this. Chromebooks, computers, they weren't designed to livestream for eight hours a day, going on and off of meetings at that time. So it's more those types of things and giving them tips and tricks on how to refresh machines and that aspect. But as far as like breakage, it's probably more user support and support of the devices, refreshing the devices, you know, switching them out if they have one that's not working well.
All right, thank you. We've seen some emails about, and I'm assuming it's from staff and teachers, about increased risk in moving to this plan. Based on what I heard tonight, I haven't heard anything that's changed from where we are today to where we're going on October 18 that would change the risk profile. Is there, I probably shouldn't ask you to speculate, but I don't see anything different that would increase risk for a staff or a teacher. Because they have the choice, they have the choice to be remote, correct?
No, it's not a full choice. So again, the staff members that are staying remote, it is because they've got a medical certification. It's not just purely a choice. Like, it's not just an individual staff member who's chosen to operate in that space. So I guess I would answer that question by saying, certainly if you, if you talk to the DePage County Health Department, of course, they would say the more individuals you have in one spot, that there's a risk profile that increases depending on your ability to carry out the mitigation strategies. So we have 50 people in this room, but we are spaced out six feet apart. If we choose not to space out six feet apart, there will be a risk profile that will increase. So simply having kids in the building does not inherently create the risk. It's dependent on your ability to carry out the mitigation strategies.
I should have asked my question more carefully. The original hybrid plan to where we're going today, that's what I meant, not between where we are today. I meant between the two hybrid.
Yes, I know, I, yes. I think where we were at the point in time when we were recommending the hybrid plan, I believe we are in the same place.
Thank you, yeah, that's what I meant, thank you. I noticed that the, we're going to do a survey for high school students, which is awesome. I just, I think that's fantastic that we're going to poll that community again. We're not doing it for the middle school, and I believe it's because we're already in a different structure at the middle school. Is that correct?
Yeah, so in middle school, the students at a virtual academy are already in that virtual academy path with teachers that are part of the virtual academy. And so, so no, that's, we're not doing that. I would anticipate we may get a few requests from individuals about perhaps navigating between. I will say admittedly to the board, that's going to be a bit more complicated at the middle school because your two paths, both your in-person and your virtual academy are staffed already. You've got, you've got those staffed. And so if there's significant migration one way or another, it would have, it'd have a staffing impact in terms of how you had to either slot kids. So I think we may have some, but we're not planning to do a full survey at the middle school level.
But that will happen at the change of the semester.
Correct.
Yeah, perfect.
Can I clarify, so the answer to that question? So we have two separate sections, virtual and just remote learners in middle school. So if somebody were to ask, to say, who was supposed to be going into hybrid in the fall when we thought we were going that way, who had not chosen virtual academy, if they all of a sudden said, no, I don't want my kid in school, and they wanted to go virtual, would they by definition be changing all of their classes because they'd have to join a virtual academy?
Yes.
Class and teacher, so that-
At the middle school, yes.
Would be a huge deal, okay. Got it.
So for the high school survey, we'll give four days to turn that around, which I understand the need to move quickly, it makes total sense. What's the communication plan? Do we have, what do we think in terms of communication to the community in that timing and turning that around other than, you know, phase choices we have?
Yeah, so, Eric has been working with the two high school principals and staff. So the initial communication will come from the district with the update on tonight, assuming the board is supportive of the plan, the update for tonight. And that survey, when it goes out, we've asked the high school principals to schedule then updates from when the initial survey goes out, reminder updates to their student and parent communities in addition to using their other channels or other social media channels and opportunities they have. Again, it's a four-day window. So, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a pretty tight turnaround, but just going to have to be as many reminders as we can squeeze into that four days.
Yeah, I just think it's fantastic we're offering that opportunity.
And I do want to mention too, just the one other thing. Our assumption is because everybody has already made a selection going into the school year, that if we do not hear from a family, we will slot them into whatever their original selection was. Or assume the original selection.
No, it's very fair, very fair. Adaptive pause. So if we have to opt for an adaptive pause, that would also mean for the elementary school level as well?
Yeah, very likely.
Trying to, I'm trying to, we're going to really be, one thing I said a few meetings ago is we really need to believe in our students to, you know, embrace this plan and think of the community and think of others. And I think that's a really important point to make because while we like to exert individualism, there is a whole community, K through five especially, who would be impacted significantly if we have to go to an adaptive pause. And I just wanted to highlight that, it's really important to me. When we moved to, sorry, when we did not go to virtual academy, did that mean students were still associated with their homes, their home school? You know, the school that they're affiliated with, is that correct?
At the high school?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, they're still in their home school.
All right. And then, one last question. This is, this has more to do with winter than it does with our change tonight. But as winter comes upon us, our ability to do, you know, show your smile, have windows open is going to be a little bit more of a challenge. Have we talked about that and what that looks like?
Yeah, what it looks like to get outside?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how we're going to do that.
I guess I'll remind you, at the elementary level, Dr. Sloggy could probably address this. What are the parameters when we don't take students outside for recess at the elementary?
The feel-like temperature. Being an elementary principal for 10 years, the feel-like temperature has to be above zero. So we really, you know, would always try to get the kids outside for fresh air and get them moving. So obviously, we want to get the kids outside, even in the cold weather, to give them that show-your-smile break. And then obviously have the tents set up. If we've got rain and we're still able to get them outside underneath the tents. So we would follow those same protocols. Obviously, we want kids to dress ready for those pieces. There's also other strategies that you can do just to get them out quickly and get them back in. Because in recess, they are moving more. So obviously, we're not going to have kids going out and sitting in really, really cold weather. But to get them out for that break, you can still obviously have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. So before I come over here, I want to just kind of double back to one comment that Rob made, technology. So can you paint a picture of what the technology looks like in the classroom? And what impact that is on the teachers? And maybe, you know, some of this is just why we need the professional development days and why we need the pilot week. But I'm thinking about, you know, is there a webcam in the room? Is there a second Chromebook camera? You know, as a result of that, is the teacher going to be kind of bound to a zone that they have to stay in to be on camera? You know, are the teachers going to be able to use the whiteboards or the digital display devices? I've done a lot of presentations in rooms, you know, audio. Everybody thinks about the video, but audio is a major challenge. So just kind of, can you paint a picture for what the plan is right now and the importance of the piloting?
Yeah, sure. I mean, right now, I mean, I could probably say they'll, every classroom will have two devices for the instructor, two cameras, two sound recording devices. They'll join both meet or Zoom as a host and a co-host on those. It's kind of how we piloted the last two days. We continued to pilot and see what works. Again, as everyone instructs differently, different subject matter instructs differently. But we've added a secondary device that's hardwired so that it's always connected. Again, the main reason that we did that was not a bandwidth issue, not that their laptop wasn't powerful enough. In most cases, their laptop is actually the same other districts are using with just one device. We did it more to split the processing power so that there's less of a failure point. In many cases, they'll have access to both of those in front of them with a monitor so that they can see. It is a little bit of that training piece of the juggle, which mic is on, which one is showing sound. But it also allows them to, if they're launching pair deck, if they're launching programs, that it's not a processing issue on the machine that will slow it down. But they'll be on two separate screens. I wish I, we had the pictures of the demos we did today because it really kind of shows you a picture of the teacher station. He stands up, he sees the kids who are at home. He's got a camera in front of him that shows his whiteboard. If he wanted to present, he would present one to his projector, but also to the students at home. They'd be able to see a slide presentation. You know, the one thing that would be the same as they're doing now is you really wouldn't stream a video through video conferencing. You would send a link and say, watch the video ahead of time or watch it in the next 10 minutes. But I think those are the things that we're working through now. But our initial focus was to get a secondary device. Talking with a few other districts, making sure that they're sharing that processing power so that, you know, God forbid, something goes wrong and they drop a connection. They don't lose 15 kids at home as well because the other machine is still on and connected as a co-host. Really kind of cuts that failure point. But that is the focus of some of these PD training and things, is how does that best work in each room and situation? In some cases, they might want the camera that's a little further away. We bought extended cables on the cameras. In others, they might be more comfortable behind their laptop and still looking over and seeing the students, so. Melissa, anything?
Yeah, I'll just add on to it from the instructional side. So Rod and myself, administrators from both buildings and teachers from both buildings have been working, as Dr. Kyle mentioned, at 12:30 every day. And we're putting, we're trying out all different rooms, all different setups with different teachers. And so we have technology specialists at both buildings that are, they teach courses and they serve as technology coaches that are helping us navigate all the different scenarios that our teachers are doing right now in a remote setting and applying it to this, what will be this new setting. So we're trying everything to be fully prepared.
Wait, did you have a follow-up, Brad, or are you done?
No, go ahead.
I had one more question, I had one more question I forgot to ask. At the, for middle school, for second semester, we're going to have a choice. Will we continue with virtual academy in second semester or move to streaming?
Fair question. Right now, the assumption is we'll continue with virtual academy. But again, we'll evaluate how this goes.
Can I piggyback on something Rob mentioned before about smile breaks, you know, at the elementary? What are we, are we doing anything for middle school and high school to be able to have a break during the day?
Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah, so at the middle school, there are some opportunities for students to have mask breaks within courses. So we have PE. We also will have band and choir. So if they're in, you know, those courses, they will have that break. They will have a lunch period that we extended. And so they'll have their lunch and then they have an opportunity to go outside for a break. And then each building administrator is currently working with their instructional team to build a system for mask breaks that makes sense at that building level. So that is actually something that our team that we worked with identified as one of those final details that needed to be worked through at the building level.
Same for high school, they'll have-
Same for high school.
Same for high school with the classes, and we still need to work on other opportunities for when high school students could get breaks, that's a piece that we still have to work on between now and October 19th, with band, and also with PE daily, those are opportunities for students to have mask breaks as well.
And PE will not be changing into uniforms, or?
Correct.
No uniforms, so it's kind of low, low-impact cardio, but the wellness departments, 612, have been working on this all summer, on what that's gonna look like, so, they're back at it, now that we have a plan, they're working on that as I speak, not, probably not right now, but they're working on it throughout.
Thank you.
So, let's go, Susan, Jim, and then Jenna, and then just for the whole board, before we close this topic tonight, I do, I wanted to go around the room and just kind of take a straw poll, see where we're all sitting tonight, not a formal vote, but just to give some good consensus, hopefully, to the administration where we sit, so, Susan?
Um, I have questions that I wrote during the presentation, I have some written from prior.
Susan, make sure you talk.
Oh, sorry, I have some written from the presentation, some written prior, so I might bounce around a little bit, so, I'll start with the presentation, for the start date for middle school, for sixth graders, what happens to the cohort A on Tuesday, since we don't have school on Monday?
So, um, our teacher teams actually have professional learning and planning around the hybrid model on Friday, and this is part of their planning, is to put pieces in action about what that learning experience looks like on that first day, and so, it is an asynchronous day for them, but they will put the plans in place, as it makes sense to the learning experience for their class.
Melissa, can I, can I clarify that, I think part of the question is because there are only four days in that week, each of the hybrid groups will still have two in-person days that week, correct?
Thank you, Dr. Schiller, I, I had forgotten it was Columbus Day, so, yes, that week, yeah, they, they won't have the one common synchronous day, so.
So the, the sixth grade will, will still be an A, B, A, B.
Oh, okay, okay.
Both of the hybrid groups will have two days in school.
Okay, and that will be communicated out by the principals, I assume?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that makes more sense. What do, for the middle school, when they're, for the, I guess, for the bell schedule, I guess this, oh, actually, I guess this is just the virtual academy, never mind, I'm sorry, it was a misunderstanding, can I ask, how does band work? Like, I was, my, my son plays a trumpet, like, so which is a very breathy, I don't, I don't understand how that's gonna work.
I can answer that, I've worked with the band, basically, elementary all the way to high school, so we met this summer about band, and our goal for band, really, elementary all the way up, would be, is to get the students out at least one time a day, like, one time a week, they could do two if they'd like, we have tents at the high school and middle school, we are ordering some extra PPE for them, for their instruments and masks, that you actually can plug the woodwind instruments in, so, there are, I mean, our band group has been great, they actually found some new research that they'd like to play inside, but we're not playing inside till ISBE says we can, so, I've been working with the band teachers, orchestra and choir on this, and we've got PPE that we have ordered, and we're ready to have that work, but the minimum is just at least one time they play outside. When they're inside, they'll be doing reverse, like, learning how to do things without actually playing the instrument, so they might be learning where to move their fingers, but they're not playing, percussion can be inside, orchestra can be inside, but right now, choir and band, if you're gonna play your woodwind instruments, they have to be outside.
Okay, okay, thank you. During the live stream, in, in the high school model, during the live stream, this is kind of two, I'm gonna ask both questions, what is the priority for the teacher during that time, is it the in-person students, or is it the kids who are on screen, and can the kids in the live stream ask questions?
Yes, and both, well, I mean, both are priorities, so there's not one group of students that are prioritized above the other, that, that would not be fair to either group of students to, you know, to suggest that, there is, so I think the, the goal is to help teachers with strategies to be able to actually incorporate a, a mixed modality teaching, right, so you're, you're teaching a lesson that is incorporating both, but i- in the same way that now, kids would have an opportunity if they're remote to be able to, to ask questions, that, that opportunity will still exist, again, I think it's gonna take some time for people to, for teachers to kind of adapt to new opportunities and, you know, new strategies, and that's gonna be something that's gonna have to evolve.
Yep, okay, yeah, no, and on that note, I think it would be important to, you know, have principals communicate to parents that we're gonna need, parents especially, I mean, kids too, but I think, just from feedback that we've been getting, that parents need to be patient and have some grace as we go into this period, as we've all, I think, I liked your analogy of the tug-of-war with four ropes, I've read, building the airplane as we're flying it, you know, that it, this is what's happening right now, this is all new to everybody, everybody, and we're, we're working on it, we'll figure it out, and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're, that was one of my questions that, that Mrs. Murphy already answered, like, how, you know, how did we develop this live stream, how are we approaching this with the teachers, and so I'm happy to hear that we're looking at a lot of different scenarios, trying to figure out what is the best way that works, and, and same with the technology issues, that this is not unique to District 200, that this is something that is happening everywhere, and that we will, we'll, if we work together, we'll figure it out, and I appreciate our teachers for doing this enormous lift and having to reinvent education again, in a very, very short amount of time, and I just want to acknowledge that, that we see that, and we, we appreciate that, and we know how incredibly difficult this is. For the hybrid schedule for high school, is attendance taken on Wednesday on the asynchronous day? Is there a way to know that these kid, that the kids engaged that day?
We, we will have to take, we have to take attendance on any day that's, counts as a school day, so there will have to be a protocol for taking attendance on that day.
Okay, and is that still being worked out?
Still, there, there's some, some elements of that that we're still navigating through, we'll have to, to work through that asynchronous day, and, and how you do that, and again, there are a couple of different methods that we developed in the spring, for how you can go about taking attendance, obviously, you can take attendance, you know, if a student is appearing at a required class meeting, you can also do it through, like, required work that's completed and handed in.
Okay, okay. For high school, virtual academy, if, I mean, I have good, strong faith that this is gonna work, but is, is edgenuity still on the table at semester if we need it, in some form?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have that tool available to, to us, I think it'll come back to what I mentioned earlier, in that we're gonna evaluate how this works.
Right, yeah.
And if it, obviously, if it does not work well for our virtual academy students, that, that is an option we can re-explore for second semester.
Yeah, okay, and then, to, just to kind of reiterate Rob's point that he made with the, with the survey that will go out, I remember getting some feedback in that very first survey we sent out in June, that it was buried in an email, and so I just really want to make sure we're gonna fire on all cylinders, text, email, social media, pigeons, I don't, whatever needs to happen, like, we need to make it happen, and we need to make it happen often, and so I just want to make sure that we've got, especially our hard-to-reach populations, because we know we have a large population that don't, there's now cell phones, and there's, you know, maybe an email at work, you know, and how, how we're gonna, I know we worked with a lot of our outreach organizations at the beginning of the school year, so I just want to make sure, like I said, we're firing off, on all cylinders there to make sure we capture everybody.
Absolutely, it'll be included in a standalone email that will be very crystal clear in the subject line, and we will, that will come from, directly from the building principal, it will not be included as part of another communication, it will be standalone.
Okay. And will they, I'm, I'm sorry, will they use text as well? I know, I know, just because I have a freshman at South, I know that, I almost, I think I always get a text message that there's an email, and I just want to, will that happen at both high schools?
Yes.
Okay.
It's important to know that not all parents are registered to receive text messages, they have to self-select to do that. So, but yes, we will use that feature, and then, we have still remained in good communication with our community partners, World Relief, Outreach, WIFS, People's Resource Center, Marion Park, other community partners, and I have reached out to them frequently when we have had major changes, like when we changed food, the way we do food service, or other things like that, and they've been very helpful, so, we'll make sure to communicate with them as well.
Okay.
And they'll also be translated in Spanish and English, so both English and Spanish.
That was one of my questions too, thank you. Special education, is, in, in special populations in, in general, is there thought going into a priority to getting some of those kids back full-time beyond the instructional classroom as needed?
Hello, so, our students who are in our special populations, not our instructional programs, they will be coming back in person, following their grade brand hybrid plans, so they'll be in-person full day, for our students that are currently on those half-day programs, our reopening committees are looking to bring them back full-time by the end of first quarter, which is approximately the end of October, so we want to give the other groups a chance to transition back into the building, give a chance to see how our new processes and protocols are working at the secondary level, and we look forward to having all of our secondary students back in the building by the end of October.
Okay, great, thank you. When will, for the health and safety protocols, when will the, the certification form that parents have to sign be due, and will kids, how will that work on the first day if kids have it, if parents have not signed that form, are they prevented from entering, or how, how does that work?
Dr. Slaggy, wanna take that out, how do we handle the?
So, much like at the elementary level, we will, we will send the, actually, from, probably from Erica's department, she sends it out through all of our principals electronically, we'll send that out with enough leeway time prior to the first day of in-person, probably a couple of weeks before, right, so you're probably looking at the early part of October to send that out electronically, so it gives our front office staff a lot of time to monitor who's getting those forms now, because the parents do it electronically, so it also gives you time to call people and get them. If you have students that show up that have not self-certified, you, you really have two options, one, you're, you're getting ahold of the parent to walk through that process, you can also do the screening on the student, so now, now you are in a position where you are temperature checking, you're going through the pieces with one of your medical staff, so, both of those options avail themselves, but the, the first piece is, is that we want to get everybody to self-certify, we're gonna give ample time, and for the folks that don't, we're gonna work tirelessly to get them to do that, even work with our EL departments, and all those different pieces.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna quickly.
One quick item on that, did you say we're testing?
Not testing, doing, doing the actual certification, temperature screening.
We do do that.
Uh, we can, we don't do that.
No, that's.
Daily, it's a self, but we have the ability to, if, if a student has shown up that has not completed the self-screening form.
So we could?
We can.
Okay, and then, and either accept or reject that person entering the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but again, the, the goal is to get, yes, the, the goal is to ensure that the form's been signed, because we want to make sure that that self-screening is happening at home.
So, with the current remote model, our kids get instruction every day, and, at the high school, you know, now there'll be four days, and then, one asynchronous, how do the teaching minutes compare under the current remote plan and now going into hybrid, or is, is it the same, like, does it wash out, like, does it, not wash out, but, you know, does it come out the same, as far as instructional minutes?
I'd have to do the math on it real quick, so you're gonna be synchronous four 47-minute periods a week versus 530-minute periods.
And then, I guess that works out, so, so I guess, so, teachers are teaching per their contract, what their minutes are supposed to be teaching, just done a little bit differently?
Yes.
Okay. One thing I wanted to talk about is mental health, that has been brought up a tremendous amount of times, for both students, and I also want to talk about with staff. For, I was gonna start with staff, for, if I remember correctly, at the beginning of this year, that you, that the, the district implemented an employee assistance program, is that correct?
Yes, we still have that.
Mental health, they can call for mental health services if they.
Yes.
And is that communicated, I don't know, maybe on a monthly basis or something, to staff, reminding them that that exists, that if they need assistance, if they need help, I just feel like that's a really important piece to keep reminding employees of, I, I'll be honest, I, I worked for a company in my twenties, and they had that, and I was afraid to use it, and they sent a reminder, and I used it, and it was fantastic, and I just think that reminder, and I think sometimes mental health can have a stigma to it, and I think if we normalize it and keep reminding employees that this exists, and it's there for you to use, and we would like you to use it if you need it, that, I would just like to see some emphasis placed on reminding our staff that that is available to them should they need it. And then, in the same vein with our students, in, you know, in hearing from parents that they're, you know, that kids are, you know, I think kids are reacting differently to this, that, and reminding, not only parents, but students too, on, again, some kind of a regular basis, these are the counselors you can talk to, these are our school psychologists, just, again, I, I'm not sure, I'm just using monthly, I don't know, you know, you got, you are the experts and professionals, whatever you feel is a regular reminder, but I just feel like that's a message to keep putting out to students and their parents, we have these resources available to you, please don't be afraid to use them if you need them, I just feel that's a really important message to keep communicating to everybody. And then, on that same note too, with our special populations, and, with special ed and ELL, that those coordinators are reaching out to those families and students, and not necessarily waiting for them to contact us, because they, that's a, you know, little bit different situation, and, you know, and I, I think those families could use some outreach from us to them, if that's a possibility. And, I think, most of my other questions, I think were, were asked by other people. All right, I think that's it, thank you.
Jim, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll try not to be too repetitive here, I just, again, I just want to be clear on what, particularly at the high school, what, what the week means, okay, so we have X number of students in a given class, Monday, roughly half of those students go to class, they get the same material as those that are online will see as well, and the virtual academy at the high school, so all three, everybody in that class, whether it be one in-home, or in, in-person, electronically, or virtual academy, will see the same program, okay, and then, the next day, everything will stay the same, except one group will switch, okay. Now, I guess my, my first question is, what, what are we doing now? I mean, what, what's different, do we have a, is everybody on that plane right now, or do we have virtual academy on a, on a different set of materials than the?
They're, they're in the same classes right now.
Okay, so everybody's the same, so nothing's really changing in that front, okay, all right, and therefore, our class size and so on won't change either?
Won't change.
So we, we got that covered, okay. One of the questions I had in, in the book here, it says on, in the high school, October 5th through the 13th, live streaming pilot preparation, what does that mean? What is pilot preparation?
The technology that we're talking about, the ability to, to kind of broadcast and have, have available those live streaming tools, we're gonna, we're gonna give teachers an opportunity to pilot and use that technology before there are students physically in front of them in the classroom.
Okay, so an active teaching day.
It's just a matter of getting comfortable with the tools.
Okay, so it's an active teaching day, and, okay.
Correct, correct.
All right, do we actually provide any time, don't have? All right. Do we actually provide any time? Don't have active teaching? I mean, I heard one day about a Teachers' Institute Day, I believe. Is there a, you know, how do we get teachers up to date to deal with this if it's going to be a lot different than what they're doing now?
Yeah, so a combination of a, we do have a day coming up. We've got a day coming up this Friday that students are not in attendance. And it's a professional learning day. And I think what, here earlier in the question is, can we look at some other opportunities to free teachers up to have active learning? And we can, we will, we'll work on that based on what the need is, right? So number one, we need to continue to partner with our teachers and our staff members, and some of our teacher leaders who are helping us to plan and prepare this transition. We need to, we need to partner with them on what the need is, and then, you know, how to go about delivering that. Don't forget as well that teachers do have blocks currently where they're not with students, so that active synchronous learning experience right now is in thirty-minute chunks, right? The classes are thirty minutes, which means there's some time on either end of the day, too, that we can, hopefully we can utilize for learning as well.
Is there a significant change in the technology from where we were last year as far as e-learning, and where we started this year on the e-learning, and now shifting? Is there really a big difference of delivery? You know, I, I, obviously, there's going to be two screens, maybe. I don't know, you know, one with the students here, one with the students there. I mean, are there other big significant changes?
Again, I don't know that, I mean, the way that the technology is utilized will be a change, but I think it's as much a kind of a management or a pedagogy structure on how do you do that, right? How do you simultaneously engage a group of students that are in the classroom with a group of students that are remote? I just think it's, that there's a different technology around that. It's not so much the comfort level with using, I mean, a Zoom call is a Zoom call. A Google Meet is a Google Meet piece. But how the teachers approach that, and also how they align their lessons to work in that type of teaching experience, is that's where some change in art comes in.
So that change that's occurring, where's the guidance coming? And what's the time of preparation for that?
Yeah, it's happening now. So that's exactly what we, when talking about, Jim, it's going to start as early as this Friday with the Institute Day, and then it's going to continue to draw on some of, we have instructional technology specialists in each of the schools that are working on those tools to make them available and support teachers. We also, at the high school level, each of our departments has a department chair that can provide support within the department. So it's not coming from just one place. I think it's coming from a variety of sources. And in large part, for some teachers, their teachers are going to need more support than others. There's some that are going to figure this out and adapt, and wouldn't necessarily need to sit through three days of training to kind of figure out a new approach. So I also want to make certain that what we provide to teachers is the support that they need to navigate through this transition, both at the front end, and then once we start, right, to continue to support that.
Okay.
And a little extra, Jim, just to answer to one extra, we pointed out is October 9th an asynchronous day where our high school teachers could get more training as well and more support to make this transition. So on top of everything Dr. Schuler said, we also want to create an asynchronous day so they get more training as well.
Okay. And then, now, the only difference between high school and middle school, then, will be virtual academy is a different set of materials, pretty much?
No. So virtual academy is a whole separate strand at the middle school. But the hybrid model at the middle school, there is not the live streaming piece. So at the middle school level, the day that students are not in the building, so if they're in the building on Monday, Tuesday is a full asynchronous learning day for the students. And then Wednesday at the middle school is still a fully synchronous remote learning day at the middle school level. So those models are not, not the same, high school and middle school.
Middle school is going four days a week or two days?
There'll be two days a week. So that part isn't changing, right? The hybrid model of students in-person two days a week is not changing. But on the off days at the middle school, they are not live streaming into the classroom.
Okay, but on day, you know, on Monday, when there's in-person half the class, where are the virtual academy?
They're in their own section entirely, right? They have totally separate teachers.
Right. So they're not really the same material, then, as, you know, I mean, in general, first grade materials, or seventh grade material, seventh grade material, but it's a different technique.
Yes. The lesson is not the same.
And part of the reason is that we'd have to change a lot of things that would have to happen. I mean, you know, the high school is already on that same, you know, they're on the same page.
Right. The high school, the virtual academy is already incorporated in the regular sections. That is not the case at the middle school.
Okay, good. All right.
Jim, can I clarify?
Sure.
There is no virtual academy at the high school right now, correct? Is that a correct state? Because I want to make sure our terminology is consistent.
There are students that will be attending all virtual. What you want?
No, no, I'm talking about using the virtual, our virtual academy model, the edgenuity.
No, there is no virtual academy through edgenuity.
Right, none.
They're all in the same class, same material.
Correct. Okay, good.
Okay. Okay. You know, the other, you know, I guess the other fundamental question I had, and through the many emails we've had and so on, is if we didn't start this now, okay, if we elected to say, well, let's start at the next semester, wouldn't we be kind of going through the same issues? I mean, we might have a better cutoff on academics. But again, the actual technology of presenting all this and so on would be the same challenge that we're going through now. Is that not correct?
Yeah.
So if anything, we might get to a second semester where we have a cleaner start. And maybe one day we'll get back to full. You know, and I think the transition here to full in-person will be easier with this hybrid model than it would be if we were true, totally remote. It's my thoughts, anyway. So I would hope that to be the case. Let's see, the, okay, so, you know, again, I guess the other big concern I have is that, you know, and again, I see it in emails and so on, is that, you know, for this to succeed, I think we need not only, you know, the staff support to go forward with it, but, you know, we need the parent's support. You know, if we have everybody saying that e-learning is terrible and so on, you know, that pervades to the kids. I just, you know, I, we need to have that parent's support. So whatever we can do to get everybody on board is going to be better. Because this is, in my opinion, the best thing we can do right at this time. You know, and I think there's issues about sports and so on, but, you know, that's, I don't see that as my business right now. You know, I see this as an education, where we need to have everybody on board. And, you know, there's going to be tweaks. It's not perfect. But, you know, if we don't have that support, that's a big deal. You know, it'll never succeed for that student in particular. I think it'll be a lot more challenging. So in that respect. Now, one other question I have, though, is that, you know, is there an opportunity? We have a, we've talked about equity. And equity, and I think Susan touched on this a little bit, is there a potential of some students being full-time at high school, you know, in-person every day because of, you know, different circumstances in their house, or availability of technology? Do we have, have we given that any thought? Because I would hope we could, because, you know, that's the group that concerns me, to get left behind. And, you know, and, you know, I don't know what percentage of students, but if it's, you know, X number of students in a class, can we fit them and make that work? I would hope we could. Or at least give it some serious consideration. You know, as part of that, what he's trying to look at. So I think those are the big picture issues that I'm looking at. So I will pass to Gable.
Okay. Before I ask questions, I just wanted to share, and some of this is a little late in coming, I had asked Dr. Schuler to share with us as a board the rosters of all of the reopening planning teams. We've been hearing since the spring that we have a core reopening team and a group of sub-teams. And I think if I'm looking at the material that was shared with me correctly, we started with the core team and seven sub-teams, which has transitioned into a core team and fifteen sub-teams. So I took a look at all the rosters of all those sub-teams, and I tried to sort it all out to get a sense of who was on each of these teams. And I found that these teams had a representation of anything from senior leadership teams, to building admin, support staff, union leadership, teachers, various student services personnel, such as counselors, psychologists, emotional wellness, some of our new position people. We had a health, we had health personnel, special ed personnel, additional personnel, and a, I think, nine different community partners who participated on some of these sub-teams. So I, on behalf of myself, and I'm assuming on behalf of the rest of the board, I'd like to say a thank you to, obviously, our senior leadership team is here. Since we are streaming this, I have to imagine a lot of people who've been involved in the reopening planning is probably watching our meetings. So if they see us, I want them to know how much we appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And in asking for this information, I basically wanted to get a sense of the numbers of people that have been involved in this planning, as well as to feel confident that we were hitting on all these different stakeholders or participants in our system. And I think from the members, I'm feeling good that we have a lot of representation from a lot of different areas, looking at a lot of different pieces of these puzzles. And by my count, I'm maybe a little bit off, adjusting for duplicates, we have people who have done double and triple time on different subcommittees. But my adjusted total comes to one hundred and seventy-five people who've been involved in this planning, which I think is extraordinary. And I think that both explains why we have such a solid plan in front of us, as well as explains why it's been so hard to get this all done. Because if it takes that many people, there must be a lot of work getting done. So there's just that, and that's an explanation. I shared this with all of the board members tonight. I do have some questions. I guess number one would be, are we confident, are you confident as a planning team, that we can roll this out on the timeframe that you've proposed as opposed to waiting until the end of the quarter? Because I've heard some concern about that.
Yeah, we would not have proposed that timeline if we didn't think that it was doable. And again, I want to be clear that the recommendation tonight is not just a result of, you know, senior leadership team or a small handful of folks working through this timeline. We worked with our building administrators, our building principals, and staff at the buildings to really look at that as well. We've been very honest about what's in front of us in terms of the work. And what I cannot do definitively is tell you exactly how this shift in plan impacts each staff member individually. Some will make the transition much easier than others. Some will take a little bit longer, require a little bit more support, but I believe that it's doable.
Great. Okay. I would also like to reiterate what Jim said, which is that even returning kids to the classroom in a hybrid model, we are going to have some form of e-learning for the, you know, the near future, for however long it takes to get us to the next step in all of this. So I really do think it is important. I totally understand that e-learning is nobody's first choice. But I think attitude makes a huge difference. And while I know there's been a big push to get kids into the classroom and away from e-learning as a full-time model, I think we have to make sure that we are projecting the right attitude to our kids that says, I know this isn't what you want to do. I don't want to, you know, I may not want to be doing my job from home quite this way either. But we're going to be grateful that we're able to get into the classroom, and that this is a step forward. But, and we're going to do what we can. I appreciate everything Rod's department's doing to try and help make the e-learning experience better for both the teachers and the students. But again, I think attitude is everything. And at some point, we need to be patient and, to use Susan's words, use patience and grace. I do have a question with that in mind, since we are going to still have e-learning going on. How are we doing with making sure that all of our students have internet access? Do we, do we know of kids who have problems still?
Yeah, we do still have, at the beginning of this year, with what we had with hotspots, we were able to distribute everyone in virtual academy and the middle and high school who had it, who requested internet. We have since added another hundred hotspots that we are still in the process of working out. But we've also entered into an agreement with Comcast where we provide Xfinity at Home for them. We're getting reimbursed from the DuPage ROE for six months for that service as well. Those codes just started going out to newly identified high school and middle school families that were listed. And we're working on getting the rest of the students identified at the beginning of the year at the elementary who are in-person, who still need internet. We believe we should be able to cover everybody again, from the original numbers. They about doubled after everybody actually showed up. But hopefully, here in the next two weeks, we should have most everybody that we know of right now with some access or access to Comcast Essentials with a joint agreement with the DuPage ROE and us.
Okay. Have we connected with all of our students by now, one way or another, to know we know that they're out there somewhere?
Yeah. Do we know, just right off the top of our head? It's a fair question. Jen, I will have to make sure, absolutely certain, before I do that, I want to tell you we're at a hundred percent of our students. If we have one or two that have not logged in, but I have not heard of major concerns in students, in terms of students checking in.
And I can answer that from the high school's perspective, just because they meet still, just like if we were in-person five days a week. They have teams with alphabet lists. They check to see who's taking attendance, who's there, who's checked in, which kids are there, which kids aren't. And so they do have a protocol in place on how to track down those students. And just, I think, Mr. Matheson asked, have we looked at trying to bring students in five days a week? We're going to first balance the students from home, from the students that come in. And once we do, even the high schools have already started targeting certain students that they think it would be better for them to be in every day, if we have the space and it's six feet socially distanced. So they are, you know, obviously, from March, everybody's improved. And the teachers have worked really hard on taking attendance. And if kids aren't there, they're reporting it. And then we have systems in place where we're tracking the attendance of those individual students.
Okay. So can I assume we're keeping track of some sort of subgroups within our kids, of kids who have IEPs, kids who have 504 plans, kids who have internet issues at home, or perhaps even supervision issues at home, with our whole connecting to our kids and ACE's conversations we had last year a lot? Are we learning what the family situations are of our students so that we can figure out, and again, I understand that it's a space-available thing, but to the extent that there might be a good reason to have a kid in our buildings? And I know it sounds like a complicated puzzle, but are we watching for those different subgroups?
Yes. Yes. Are you asking for?
Yeah, I'm asking if we're thinking about those subgroups.
Yes, yeah. I'll just mention that. Absolutely. Again, like, let's, we got to make this transition first. We've got to get kids in the, in the building. And, you know, we will certainly move with that next step. I think that's been clear tonight, that you want us to look beyond, obviously, just getting everybody back into the building and starting to look at the next iteration as well.
Right.
Quick comment on that. Can you explain why we cannot go full-time students in classroom now again? Just to reiterate that briefly?
Physical distancing. Yeah, I mean, you've got, at the middle and high school level, if you've got twenty-five to...
Full-time every day.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying to you. Because there's no way that you could maintain the six-foot physical distancing within each of the classrooms if every student were there every day.
Okay, which is state law that we need to do that?
Not state law. That is one of the requirements in the reopening plan from the Illinois State Board of Education.
Our facilities aren't big enough, simply so.
Yeah, I mean, the size of your classrooms.
Yeah. So there may be a private school, something that has that, but they have different capacities than we have, or numbers of students, or whatever.
Could be. Yeah, I mean, again, right now, you've got your elementary students in every day, because we've kept the class size at a number that we can accommodate.
And we have twenty-seven percent that are not in school.
Correct.
Okay.
One more question. So we've had elementary school kids in-person. We've been learning from that experience. We also have had sports at, at least the high school level, I guess, certain teams in some kind of capacity. Do we have a sense of how well that's going? Have we had any incidences of disease among those groups?
Yeah, we have not had to fully quarantine any of our athletic programs at the high school. We've certainly had a couple of cases. I believe we've had three student cases at the high school level that have led to some isolated quarantines of students. But we have not had any programs fully canceled. I believe over the summer, we had one camp on the north side that at least a decent chunk of the camp had to be postponed for a window of time, but since school has started, we have not had to cancel any programs.
Great. I have one final comment, and that is that I have struggled hearing the word "survey" used when you talk about surveying students again, because I think the word "survey" leads to some misperceptions within the community. Because when you say we're going to resurvey, I don't think of it so much as survey as sort of take a registration recount as to who wants to come into our buildings and who does not. Because I think when you say "survey," the misperception that's out there is that we were at any point in time surveying the community as to their opinion about whether we should have in-person education or not, and it was never our intention to ask the community's opinion about that. And as we started out this whole presentation, when you said that we started with the foundation ideas here, and one of them being, we're planning to put kids in school when we can do so safely. So I just wanted to, again, we have a big audience with a meeting like this, and want people to realize, it means no disrespect, it simply is, we are doing what we are supposed to do because we are a school district that's supposed to educate students in our buildings if we can. It's not a popularity contest and has absolutely nothing to do with who screams the loudest or sends the most emails on a given day, just so there's no concern there.
Oh, what you're done then.
Okay. I think that's the end of my questions.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I have one other follow-up question. We've heard, we've had some emails come through, as we always do, and some teachers feeling like they've been left, I'll say left out, and that's a feeling, right? It's an emotion. I'm not sure what the facts are. Can you just comment on that? And then secondly, what's our plan to communicate with teachers, or how have they been communicated to in preparation for the pivot?
Yeah, so I would say this, I can't speak to an individual who may have sent an email to the board and why it is that perhaps they didn't feel as though they were a part of a reopening process. I think Jenna highlighted certainly our efforts to work with staff in that. Number one, the reason why some of the information coming into tonight was already out in the community is the fact that as we developed what was the proposal that we're bringing to the board tonight, we did share it with our staff first. We felt like our teaching staff deserved to know what was going to be brought to the board this evening, and so we shared it with them last Friday, and I think as that happened, we certainly started to filter out. So they did get an advance look at what it is that we were going to be bringing to you tonight. From here, the details in terms of those reopening plans are really going to move to building-level teams to support teachers in that. And I would tell you that your elementary staff and your elementary principals would tell you that as we got within a couple of weeks of the reopening or the start of the school year, that building-level transition team or that building-level reopening team was critical in terms of personalizing all of the details in the health and safety protocols to each individual school. Because while the general guidelines are the same, the way certain things get applied at Wheaton North versus Wheaton Warrenville South will be somewhat dependent on the building itself. So really, now, Rob, the support for teachers is going to move to kind of a building-level support, but again, the resources, the time, the opportunities that they need, we will certainly support the buildings and their instructional coaches as they continue to support teachers in turn.
Thank you. Okay, so a couple wrap-up. I have no questions. I think we've covered a lot of questions tonight, but just a couple of closing comments first to piggyback on Jenna about surveys. You know, when we took those surveys in the summer, those weren't votes, right? Those weren't our community voting on what we should do. That was, we were collecting information and feedback to help shape our plans. And we use that information to develop the plans we did. But I like what we have now for the high school plan, is we're still anchoring around choice. You know, we've heard, we've talked at this table quite a bit about choice. We've heard from a lot of community members through a big part of the 550-plus emails we've received about, you need to give us the choice. So I love the fact in the high school plan that we're going to double back and give the flexibility to the students who might have picked hybrid and want to stay remote or make that change. So I love that part of the plan. I think that's important, and it's consistent with what we've heard from the community and what we've talked about at the board. Second point is, you know, many, I think there's a lot of people that feel we're going too slow in this. We've heard from the community that, you know, we need to be back in now. We've talked about, you know, the complexities of this. We've heard from teachers recently about we're going too fast. What I want the community to hear out of this is we have a date for each of our schools, we have a plan, and we still have a lot that we need to work through in the schools, in the, you know, in the, you know, in the details of staffing, technology, logistics, that still has to get worked through. And then third piece is, you know, we are still guided by the health metrics. We have talked very little about this, so we still have to operate within the health metrics, you know, that we, you know, IDPH and the DuPage County Health Department, you know, inform us with, Dr. Shuler and I have, you know, information, we're looking at those charts and surveys, or information like every day. And I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, and I'm going to say it really strongly, we can only control what happens in our school. We cannot control what happens outside of our school. So if this is going to be sustainable, our parents, our students need to understand their role outside of school for us to keep kids in school full-time as long as possible. I can't say that enough. We've got a great plan. I think we all support it. We're going to go quickly around the table for a straw poll, but that's what's going to make this happen. We're doing all the, all the work that we need to do as a school district, as a board, you know, administrators, all the way down to the building level to make this plan happen and get kids back as fast as possible. But one of the underlying principles is we need, we want to keep them there. We want to keep them there as long as possible. So I just encourage our community who's in person, who's listening, who might be watching this, you know, a week from now, you have to understand your role in helping us be So with that, I just want to kind of go around the table, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down in terms of the plan that's presented tonight, the dates, the parameters that Dr. Shuler and his team have laid out. We'll start with the same order we went into before. You feel good about it?
Yes.
Yes, I'm supportive.
Yes.
I think the plan's well thought out, and that we should proceed.
Yes, can I throw in one more comment? I liked your comment about the community, and I would also like to say that we have been watching the groups and the students who've been very, very passionate about wanting to be back in school, and I appreciate that. We've seen some really impressive leadership among those students who've gotten out there and talked about how desperately they want to be back in school. We hear them. I would love it if those same students who've emerged as leaders, saying we want to be back in school, can also continue that leadership once we get back in to do, as Brad has said, and help make their fellow students aware that we wanted to be here, we said we wanted to be here, and now we've got to, we got to play the game right in order to be able to stay here. I think that's a great opportunity that we have here.
And if I had a vote, I would be yes as well. So Dr. Shuler, from the board, you have a consensus, clear consensus in the plan that you presented tonight to move forward, and the board supports it. Before we get to public comment, we have one other really quick topic tonight. This is the time of the year where, you know, that we'd be planning for the statewide school conference, you know, there's not going to be an in-person conference this year, but there is a Illinois Association of School Board Delegate Assembly on Saturday, November 14th. That's going to be done virtually, and that is to review and vote on the proposed resolutions. We get this package every year. This year, there are eight new resolutions proposed by school districts across the state, three affirmations of existing resolutions, and one new belief statement. And so what we need to do tonight is select our delegate to attend and vote on our behalf. And again, for the community, what the delegate assembly is, is as a member of the Illinois Association of School Boards, they get requests across the state for, from school district around issues, policy issues, legislative issues, and the vote at the delegate assembly suggests or informs the association whether they should lobby on behalf of Illinois schools. So this is a very important, important topic. The reason I want to do this tonight is because on Monday, there is a virtual delegate assembly, there's a webinar that our delegate needs to attend so that we can understand kind of the procedures for registering and how that process is going to work. Once we pick that, our delegate will attend this, and then sometime before our November 11th meeting, we're going to need to go through this book like we've done in the past and, you know, decide what our vote's going to be as a board to inform our delegate how to vote on November 14th. So not a heavy discussion tonight. That's coming down the road. What we just need to do is pick our delegate so that they can attend the webinar on Monday. Do I have any volunteers?
I will.
Susan has volunteered. Susan did it last year, she's been asking.
Yeah, if someone else wants to do it, I'm not trying to hoard it, but if...
She did such a good job last year, we should just move forward.
Go for it.
All right, you have a lot of thumbs up, Susan. Thank you for volunteering again. I know it's a very informative process and even more interesting this year. So Susan will be our delegate, and again, to the board, packages here, and we'll go through that in the next couple of meetings, no later than November 11th. So now we go to public comment. See Ms. Lawken over there looking at the public comment sheets? So due to the ongoing pandemic and continued interest in news and discussion on the reopening plans for schools, we are again temporarily amending our public comment procedures for this meeting to allow comments to be mailed, allow comments to be emailed to the board and acknowledged in the meeting. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public attending in person will have the opportunity to make public comment during the meeting. I see that we have 13 people in person signed up, so before we do that, I want to remind the members of the community that as with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comment until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is here to listen. This is not a Q and A session with the board. A lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. Per Board policy, we've allocated 30 minutes for public comments, and comments on any one subject may be limited to 20 minutes. The board may shorten the time allocation for a person's less than three minutes. That didn't work too well last time, so we'll try to keep it to three minutes. Vice President Crabtree will time things and raise her hand, and we'll keep raising our hand when you get up to three minutes and ask that you wrap things up for your comments. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your comments. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Again, Mrs. Crabtree will time the comments and raise our hands. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to board members. So we'll go through these in order, and I'm going to do the same thing I did last time. I'm going to call the person up, and then I'm going to announce who the next person is to try to make it more efficient. So first is Jessica Buzarik? I'm close, not close?
Hi, I'm Jessica Buzarik. Close. Yes, I am a resident of the district, and I have two students in, at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. You know, I'm here tonight basically representing a group of 200 educators and parents who want a safe return to schools. I spoke at a couple meetings ago, and pardon my extemporaneous speech here, a lot of the comments that have already been, and questions that have already been, that I had have already been addressed, because I didn't really have a lot of the information as to what would be presented. We heard about this via our students. You know, it's just kind of passed along, like whispering, you know, that everything's going to be open in October, and, you know, it's just, it was refreshing to hear that there has been a lot of hard work put into this plan. I do have some concerns as a parent and as someone who is also in the medical field. You know, we are still in the midst of this pandemic. We have, we're not even six months into this, and I feel like, you know, there's this push to rush, get everybody back into these buildings, and I just, I fail to see where, you know, there were all these metrics and all of these things that didn't allow us to start at the end of August, and now all of a sudden, in the middle of October, we're going to be able to do it. I just, I guess I'm just still not seeing where we are in such much better shape where we can actually implement this plan safely and have it be sustainable. One of the things that is also concerning is that while we heard a lot about contact tracing, I'm not hearing a lot about what are the requirements of these students who are possibly sent home with symptoms or who report symptoms from at home, who stay home, are they required to have some kind of medical release or, you know, I know it's recommended that they go to the physician, but are they required to have a doctor's note to come back into the building? If they are having a COVID-19 test, are they able to, or are they being required to submit that they have, that they have a negative test before they can come back? You know, I just, I hear of stories, maybe not necessarily in our district, but in other districts, where parents are having their kids tested, but then they're going back to school before the results are in, you know? And it's just, it's concerning as, you know, for the overall community that we need to stay in this proactive stance as far as keeping our community safe, or keeping our kids safe. Because if we have people who are not being honest about their self-screening, who are sending their kids to school with coughs and, you know, you know, fevers even, that, you know, we are going to start having these outbreaks, and they're going to be, start to become more and more plentiful as the weather gets bad, and people are going to be inside more. So that's just one concern that I had, was, you know, what are the requirements to getting these people? I see your hand. And just also to sum up, I wanted to thank you for bringing up the community aspect. We are all one community here in District 200, and I can tell you that, you know, a lot of the attitude that I'm hearing from a lot of some other people is pretty poor, honestly, about, you know, trying to keep our community safe, and we just want to make sure that you're all following the science as it's presented and just putting forth that we can have everybody back in the buildings when it's safe, not just because of some kind of timeframe, we have to rush back into it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Samantha Campan, and then after that would be Skip Ram.
Hi, yes, I am Samantha Campan, and I am a resident of the district with two children in the district. The head of the CDC, Dr. Robert Redfield, has warned that this fall and winter is going to be the worst season of illness in U.S. history if public health measures are not taken. Kids do not attend school on an island. They attend it with thousands of students and parents, hundreds of teachers and staff, all of whom have vulnerable people, vulnerable people in their lives. We are barreling towards it in the middle of Phase 2 of a pandemic as we have just reached 200,000 deaths, and the evidence against a shutdown is not in on mitigating this disease except for a strong test and trace program. The current projection is 400,000 dead by end of year, worse than all U.S. casualties in World War II. In two months from right now, more will die than the past seven months combined and all from this disease. With positive COVID cases in the elementary schools, as you have just mentioned, that are doing as much outdoor learning as weather allows and without passing periods, I am greatly dismayed at the thought of middle school and high school opening up just as colder weather sets in. This is going to be a powder keg for our entire community. And by community, I'm not just referring to our district, I'm talking to our community and those that we touch outside of the community. The science has not changed between August and today. The definition of social distancing has not changed between August and today. FEMA has pledged to defund its budget for school PPE across the entire country. The HHS executive in charge of the count has a massive conflict of interest. Is the district of true belief that by some miracle herd immunity will stop this disease? Please remember that the medical experts in charge of U.S. response have clearly told us that there is no herd immunity without a vaccine, that strict protocols around tests and... and trace and masking are the key and that the idea of herd immunity is a pipe dream. This is absolutely tough and terrifying moment for all of us and I thank our teachers and our educators and our board and everybody who is trying to make the best of a completely out of control situation. I hope that none of us ignore the level of focus, discipline, and humility it will require for all of us to get through this. And to continue to echo what you said, it absolutely takes our community to do this. We are all in this together, we are, whether we're in virtual or in person. The students have to take this seriously, always wear masks, and be honest with what they're doing outside of school and not bringing it into the schools, so this will work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Skip Brown is next and then after that would be Bryce Can.
I am Skip Brown and I grew up actually in the district, Woodier Edison, Wheaton-Warrenville-South. Kept it going at Wheaton College where I met my wife and we've had four kids in the district as well. Our oldest graduated virtually from Wheaton North last year and I've got one more at the high school and then two at the middle school, but I was really encouraged by the meeting tonight. Like previous ladies that spoken, you kind of come with, hey, what am I going to say? And it depends on what we are going to hear, so I was encouraged by that. I think the key is you can, you weren't going to learn anything new tonight from some of the parents' information, but having choice is a great thing. Clearly, there are people that are still really concerned about what this virus can do and they have the choice to stay home. There's certainly others that have the choice and the desire to send their kids back to school and that's great and so we're really excited about what that can do. I think the thing that I want to encourage you guys to continue to do is like you guys were talking about earlier, the end goal is to get everyone back at school, what it used to be, right? What our old reality was. And so this is a great step, the hybrid, but continue to focus on that end goal. How do we get back to it safely and in an efficient, effective way? And so I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to have that choice and encourage you to stay focused on that end goal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Bryce Can and then after the Bella Cugino.
Good evening, Board of Education members. I'm Bryce Can. I'm the president of the Wheaton-Warrenville Education Association and as the school, the return to school draws closer, we must continue to remember our families, students, and staff members all have varying levels of comfort in this return. No discussion about reopening can occur without your continued commitment to following IDPH guidelines without exception. As these reopening plans are considered, we thank you for that continued commitment. Any plan we consider should allow us to stay in person for as long as possible. This stability is what is best for the teaching and learning our students experience. We also want to make sure that we do no harm to the elementary and early childhood and transition models that are successfully running right now. We have concerns about the plan as presented this evening. The current middle and high school proposal suggests the reopening dates fall just two weeks before the end of the first quarter when the quarter break provides a more natural transition opportunity due to grading periods. It would provide additional opportunities and more time for training and preparing for the instructional changes that are imminent. Additionally, middle school students change elective classes at the end of the quarter and so that change would disrupt that process as well. The proposed timeframe for return was not a collaborative discussion as much as it was an edict. This is a significant departure from the collaborative problem solving that has been used the past six months. We believe that this return date should be at the end of the first quarter as it is a more natural date to begin this new schedule. The high school plan specifically calls for students to be able to access their live classroom while remote. This version of live streaming or concurrent learning is not yet fully tested and will require time for teachers and students to adjust to a new classroom environment and procedures. We are concerned that even with everyone's best efforts, the timeline won't be met to allow for as smooth a transition as possible. The proposed full day schedule asks our students and staff to spend seven and a half hours in half, in a half-full school around a lot of people for an extended amount of time, wearing masks the entire time with only a break at lunch and whenever teachers can work them in. Many educators will come into contact with anywhere from 90 to 120 students every day while students will come into contact with between 105 to 120 students on the days they attend classes. That is a lot of contact to occur for both groups and something we've been concerned about even before we switched to remote learning in August. IDPH guidance recommends limiting this sort of contact as much as possible, which is why we should at least consider a daily schedule that does not include lunch. Before implementing a plan that includes this, we should move more gradually and begin with a schedule without lunch while still providing food in order to make sure we can implement this in-person schedule successfully. We do not want any reopening to jeopardize the success we are enjoying at the elementary and early childhood levels. Including lunch in our secondary reopening plan will mean reallocating staff and resources in order to accomplish this. The real question is which idea has a greater opportunity for success and we believe that a schedule without lunch has the best opportunity for success and long-term sustainability in an in-person environment. I hope you'll consider these suggestions as you continue your conversations. We continue to be committed to working with you to bringing back our students into classrooms safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Next up is Bella, I'm not going to try to pronounce the last name again. After that is Eliana Hamshoe.
Hi, my name is Bella Cugino and I am a senior at Wheaton North High School. My friends and I have been looking forward to our senior year and all of its privileges since we entered high school three years ago. We've been extremely disappointed with missing out on our sports seasons, homecoming, and other social events and activities that make high school exciting. Realistically, online school prohibits us from being able to enjoy set activities for our own safety. But what is the foundational purpose of school? Learning. And not just learning the material for our curriculum, learning life lessons from our wise superiors, learning to work collaboratively with others, learning how to problem solve and manage our time wisely. However, in an online school setting, teachers barely have enough time to teach us the material of our curriculum, much less the things that make learning worthwhile. Never mind the fact that it is extremely difficult for us to focus and understand what is being taught from our home environments. There are countless distractions that are much too easy to utilize during our classes, granted that our internet connection is stable enough to make it through a whole day. There's no question that school and the online environment is completely different from a classroom setting. In a typical online class, we sign on and the teacher lectures the students on a subject for about 25 minutes. That short window of time prevents us from asking questions when we're confused or don't understand the concepts. There's not enough time in the class period to fully grasp onto the whole lesson from the teacher. The lesson spills into students' homework loads, which builds up unnecessary stress and frustration. Let me ask you this question. Where are personal connections being formed between a teacher and their students? Online classes eliminate the ability for students to form personal relationships with their teachers. Already, I've noticed that my grades are lower due to the lack of personal connections with superiors. It's no secret that teachers in our district are some of the best people who care about their students and want them to succeed, but how can they provide a strong impactful education talking to pixels on a computer screen? How can we ensure students form the important relationships with their teachers to help them succeed in and out of school? The answer is simple. Open our schools and give students a chance to learn in a supportive environment with their friends and superiors. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next up is, next up is Eliana Hamshoe and then after that will be Lex Berta.
Hello, my name is Eliana Hamshoe and I am a senior at Wheaton North High School. According to the CDC, data has shown that children between the ages of five and 17 are less likely to get COVID than adults. Of the small percentage of that contracted, our age group is nine times less likely to be hospitalized and 16 times less likely to have COVID fatalities than 18 to 29-year-olds. The majority of middle school and high school students are at the prime of their health and should have a choice whether or not to attend online school or in-person school. Online school would still be available for those who are at risk or do not feel comfortable attending in-person school. But we also need the in-person option. The main reason we have not been in school this year is because we have not found a way for students to return safely. How then are private schools able to open every day with the same restrictions that are set in place for us? Private schools in our area are following strict safety protocol and guidelines to help prevent the outbreak and spread of COVID-19. If they have found a way to safely offer in-person learning in a way that teachers and students can thrive in the classroom environment, then surely our district can do that as well. Some would say it's too great a risk to open our schools for in-person learning. While I respect that view, I completely disagree. I'd say it's too great a risk not to open our schools for in-person learning options. As COVID has forced us to physically distance ourselves, this disconnection has led to an environment of loneliness and even despair at times. Teenage drug use and suicide rates have skyrocketed and are still on the rise. We need in-person connections with our coaches, with our teachers, with our counselors, and with other students. It's only through those in-person connections that we can thrive and grow as students and protect and maintain a positive mental health. Thank you for all the work you've done to make an in-person learning environment possible with the plans you've constructed for us students. I only hope these plans will be implemented and have positive outcomes. I ask you all to please speak and fight for the students at our schools who need in-person learning, in-person teaching, and in-person connections. Thank you.
Next up is Lex Berta and then after that will be Rowan Smith.
My name is Lex Berta and I'm a resident of this district. I'm also an epidemiologist who works for a nearby health department. I have a master of public health and epidemiology from the University of Michigan and I'm also a South alum. My family is still involved with the district. I am extremely invested in the health of my family and the health of our schools. While this is my own opinion, it is well informed by my background and my own work on COVID-19. I wouldn't choose to be here in person unless I thought it was extremely important. I reviewed Wheaton, Warrenville, and DuPage metrics and feel that it is unsafe for the older grades to return in person. Reopening would put people I care about at risk. As of 9/18/20, community transmission in Wheaton and Warrenville is wavering in the warning zone. The situation is volatile. DuPage will waver between moderate and increasing risk, especially in the incoming flu season. There have already been cases in the high school without even in-person learning. With test positivity above 5% and increasing, that is the trend, this basically means that the spread is not well-controlled in our community. We can expect to see many more cases among children, parents, and teachers if high schools and middle schools are allowed to return in person. Plainly put, community transmission right now makes in-person education unsafe for children. Keep in mind that older children are vastly different from the elementary schoolers that have seen some success. They have the independence to see other, each other outside of school. The format of school with changing classes from hour to hour and lunch exposes way more kids to each other every day. I have personally seen these become problems for the spread of COVID. And also, researchers are shown that older teens can get just as sick and spread COVID just as much as adults. I would be happy to send you these peer-reviewed literature. In my experience working on COVID-19 in schools as an epidemiologist, I have come across devastating scenarios. I have numerous families where every single member of the family has become infected. There are families with children who have been hospitalized for the coronavirus in our area. You can make plans, but I will tell you from my personal experience, cases are rarely straightforward. While I can't say for certain what will happen here, District 200 will have a difficult time avoiding similar consequences if they choose to allow in-person education for higher grade levels. Finally, there are many families in the district that could not afford a hospitalization or even to stay home without symptoms due to their work or insurance situation. I ask you to consider these families and families that live with grandparents or who will not, will no longer be able to see families in person because it will no longer be safe to see them. I urge you to stand by your decision to allow only remote education at higher grade levels. It was the right choice before and since the virus has continued to spread in our community, it's the right choice now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rowan Smith and then after that would be Harold Longs.
My name is Rowan Smith and I'm a junior at Wheaton North High School. Superintendent Schuler and District 200 Board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here tonight to ask that you return us to full-time in-person learning as soon as possible. Sure, e-learning sounds great, shorter classes and a later start time, but what I've come to realize is that I would gladly get up earlier and sit in longer classes if it meant I was going back to school full-time. For me, school is much more than just academics. I want to share with you what I miss most about not being in school full-time. I miss seeing my friends and of course I miss super fanning on Friday night under the lights. But it's so much more than that. I miss the little things. I miss the feeling of seeing my friend group in the comments. I miss moving around and talking with a bunch of different groups of people before the first bell rings. I miss the friendly faces of all my teachers. I miss being in a quiet classroom during a test and the concentration it enables. I miss having to put my phone at the front of the classroom. I miss being able to ask my teachers a question. Never did I think that lessons being taught would be so rushed that there's no time for discussion. I miss laughing at something silly that happens in class. I miss talking to those sitting around me in class. I miss going to class and meeting new people and making new friends. I miss having a lunch break with more than just myself. I miss the funny conversations that we had at lunch. I miss feeling a sense of togetherness instead of isolation. Why do I miss all these seemingly small interactions? Because it's in these interactions that human relationships are built and human connection happens. It's how trust between two people is formed. It's the slow, steady consistency of these interactions that can only happen in person that form life-changing relationships between students, teachers, coaches, counselors, and administrators. Human in-person connections are how you really get to know someone and how they really get to know you. By putting students in front of a computer for five hours a day and then putting them back in front of a computer for three more hours of homework, you are completely ignoring the importance of human relationships and human connections. In a world that is so divided, shouldn't we all be working tirelessly to close all the gaps, not widen them like e-learning has done? All these things I miss can be done safely by wearing proper protective equipment and maintaining a safe social distance. I didn't want my speech to be about statistics, but I will leave you with this thought. As of Saturday, the state of Indiana will move to Phase 5, which means schools are open full-time, there's no limit on group-sized gatherings, restaurants and gyms can open as normal, and yet Indiana's COVID positivity rate is three times higher than Illinois'. Knowing this, I ask you to please put politics aside and think about school as not just a day of classes, but rather a day of human connections. Please do whatever it takes to enable those connections once again. Thank you.
Next up is Harold Longs and then after that is Susan Walk.
Yes, good evening, Harold Longs. I'm a resident of the district. I do have two kids in the high school and I find these high school students very enlightening. I hope you guys listen to them. They're exactly right. I see with my own two daughters what they're struggling with, with school and the level of education and what's coming through and, you know, then those people talking about the science. I, I don't think the science overwhelms what these kids need because you can't put science behind education. Education is something you learn, you need to be in front of instructor and you've got to be there. So, you know, I just, I think you guys are doing the right thing, at least trying to move forward with a hybrid and I'd like to see you guys move forward to getting the kids in full-time and figure out a way to do it, even if that means, you know, giving pressure to the Illinois Board of Education and telling them to lighten up some guidelines because I don't think the transmission rates are high enough to justify what they're doing to the students. And like she just said about Indiana, if Indiana has three times the transmission rate, wherever it is, and they're opening everything up, you know, why are we so backwards here in Illinois? So, I give great kudos to these high school students for coming up and speaking their mind because they're, they're right and they, they're the ones who are suffering here today. It's not us, it's them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Susan Walk and then after that is Vicky Sommerdike.
Hello, my name is Susan Walk and I have three kids in the district, one that graduated last year and I have a freshman and a senior at Wheaton-Warrenville-South currently. First of all, I want to say thank you for all the work that you guys do, but also for pointing out the three specific things that were keeping you from what happened in August and caused the shift and specifically laying out why those things changed now and how that allows us to get back to where we were. I think that's really important, those three key items. I have friends in both items. I have friends in both Wisconsin and Indiana that have middle school and high school age students that are five days a week in school, and they've been that way for about five weeks. And have they had COVID cases? They have. But have they had the flu? They have. And have they shut down schools? They haven't. They have found ways to safely distance and keep the schools open with the kids there. And I know if other school districts and other states can do it, we can as well. And I think as you guys have laid out the plan today, which I really appreciate, I think our teachers are working so hard, and I happened to run into a friend today who's a teacher in a different district, and she mentioned that it is so hard. She said, "I can't teach my middle schoolers math over a computer. I want to sit with them and show them how the problems work, and I just can't." And her district is going to hybrid next week, and she said she's so excited to be able to be in-person, to work with her students and her kids and to see them and connect with them again. I think, you know, I know I've sent a lot of emails, but, you know, I think really for me, and a lot of you said this, it's about choice. I totally respect anybody whose choice is that they want their kids to be at home and e-learn for whatever reason, whether it's medical, personal preference, whatever the case may be. But I also want the choice for myself, to know, for my kids, really, the best thing is to be in-person, to get that connection, and that we can do that. And I think by offering that in-person option, you're not taking away the option for virtual for those that need it, and I think that's important. It's simply offering the option to those that want that in-person learning. So it's kind of a win-win. I think when we get to this point, we're kind of in a win-win, hopefully. I wanted to just quickly say again how much I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, both the school board administration, and again, the teachers. They are working so hard. I know that I'm working at home, so I'll pass by and I'll hear their classes going on, and, you know, you can tell the teachers are really trying to make this work. So thank you for helping to get our kids back into the classroom and know that we do appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Vicky Summerdyke, and after that is Margaret Vitava.
Hi, Dr. Schuler, board members. My name is Vicky Summerdyke. I have a junior at Wheaton-Warrenville South and an alumni. And I support the reopening of the high school and the middle school, and today was a really good day, so thank you. It was also a good day because results of a study were published where 500 schools in 46 states who've already completed two weeks of in-person instruction showed that there was less than 1% transmission between teachers and students. And hopefully, studies like this make it easier for the decisions that you have to make for us. Your decision to reopen is huge, and it's so welcome. And I'm so grateful that we have a choice because for those that aren't comfortable with coming back to school, they can remain safely in their homes. It is the right decision for our students, for their learning, and a return to the interaction with their teachers and peers. And as a side note, my son actually found out about these plans yesterday, and he was like, "Mom, my teachers are so excited to have us back in class." And I thought that really says a lot for our teachers. There are teachers that really do miss the kids as well. I just want to say that you, the board, making this difficult decision, you're not alone. There are families like mine who will do everything we can to support you in your effort. We will do whatever it takes to make this work. Whatever your need, is it volunteers, is it donations, is it contributions, we will do what's needed to make our students, teachers, and community feel safe. Let us know how we can help, and we will help make the in-person experience successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Margaret Vitava. Yeah, I think she left. And then finally, TJ Frye.
Hi there, my name's TJ Frye. I have two students in the district, both freshmen and a senior at South, and also a daughter that graduated in 2018. Since I'm the last one on the agenda, I'll be brief. I did have comments that I was going to make about some of the difficulties that my family experienced with e-learning and my support for the hybrid plan, but instead, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for taking a balanced approach, for giving the parents the choice of what might work best for their family. And I, again, thank you for what you do. I very much appreciate all the teachers in the district, all the work they have put in thus far this year to make it successful, and as we move forward, and hope for a safe return for everyone.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of our public comments in person. As I mentioned earlier, community members not attending in person and who wanted to provide comments to the board had the opportunity to send an email to us between the posting the agenda on Friday and then 5:00 today. All board members receive and read these emails, and we have it very clear about what had to be included in the subject line to be acknowledged. These emails will be acknowledged but not read and then documented in the board communication log. We received 17 messages from, I'll just identify the names, they all relate to the reopening and e-learning feedback. Shawna Smith, Mary Crawford, Lisa Doherty, Hillary Mann, Clint Franzen, Stephanie Miller, Denise Baichek, Mary Ellen Schwartzoff, Heather Beck, Allison Barron, Tracy Kantowski, Leila Krzyszewski, JT Johns, Bryce Cant, Molly O'Connor, Claire Ames, and Jay Meda. So that's the end of our public comment section. There being no further action to come before the board and open session, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton, second to my Mr. Handland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.